Accessibility and appropriate delivery of outpatient and community mental health care in New South Wales. I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Orangie, the traditional custodians of the lands on which we're meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past and present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. My name's Dr Amanda Conne, I'm Chair of the Committee. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence that they give today. However, it doesn't apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing. I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. Welcome and thank you for making the time to provide us with your evidence today. Could each witness, perhaps starting from my left, please state their name and position title and swear either the oath or the affirmation?
My name is Priscilla Bryce, I am the CEO of Being Mental Health Consumers. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
My name's Peter Schmiedgen, I'm the Policy Lead at Being. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
My name is Ms Katie Thorburn, I'm the Policy Manager at Mental Health Carers New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. My name is Rachel Ledler, I'm the Policy Officer at Mental Health Carers New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. I'd now invite you, if you'd like, to make a short opening statement, perhaps in the same order.
Thank you. Being Mental Health Consumers represents consumers of public mental health services across New South Wales. Our goals are to understand consumer experience and to advocate for systemic change in New South Wales government-funded mental health services. We would like to use our opening comments to amplify recommendations 10, 11, 12 and 13 of our submission. These recommendations focus on the inadequacy of the current arrangements for police involvement in mental health crisis response in New South Wales. We believe that too many people have been injured or have lost their lives as a result of conduct with police during mental health crises and we would like to see change. So-called welfare checks should not be associated with the possible death of the consumer. Any adequate change process will need to include people with lived experience as core participants. Such weighty matters should not be transacted behind closed doors without the involvement of key community stakeholders. The very recent passing of Krista Cash as a result of a non-lethal being background underlies the need for timely change in this area. We note that only yesterday Minister Jackson advised that she and the Ministry of Health are starting to explore alternatives. We also note that these changes will only be possible if appropriate funding is made available to allow new alternatives to be developed. Our preferred model would be that police reinstate the substantial training they had for officers up until 2019 and that plainclothes teams respond to mental health crises rather than police. The ACT utilizes such a model as do SPOT teams in New South Wales. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mental Health Carers New South Wales, recommendations and responses at this hearing are underpinned by this quote from the executive summary of our submission. There is inadequate access to an inadequate mental health system that lacks the scale to deal with the scope of the population's need for mental health services in the community. The fragmented system is hard to navigate, tracks needs and delivers support poorly across settings, relying excessively on medication and coercive and emergency responses due to the inadequate planning and resources for follow-up and coordination. This leaves overburdened service providers hard-pressed to deliver adequate empathetic support, let alone time to identify, engage and support family and carers in their caring role and in looking after their own wellbeing. End quote. As a state peak representative and advocacy organisation for mental health carers, the issues escalated to us constantly reflect a mental health system driven by sanest discrimination, coercion and risk prediction fallacies. These thought to be relics of the past allowed for asylum era practices seen as a historical blight on the decision-makers at the time. We see this parliamentary inquiry as an opportunity to reset the direction of community services toward developing robust systems of support which can prevent crisis, facilitate recovery and foster wellbeing. Choosing instead to resource trauma-informed, personal recovery-focused community alternatives on principles of choice can generate a new culture in communities that upholds human rights and inclusion. Building strong and vibrant communities which fully address the social determinants of health is, we believe, the best preventative and responsive approach to reducing distress which presents as a mental health crisis in the community. Services that support this support carers to support loved ones.
Thank you. I'd like to start by acknowledging the incredible amount of work that both of your organisations have put into your submissions. They're extremely comprehensive, you've obviously done broad consultation, you've included the experiences of a large number of people and we really appreciate those written submissions. I might start with my own question for Being. You've chosen to focus your opening statement on the role of police in responding to mental health emergencies. It's obviously really topical at the moment, it's been in the news. This committee's terms of reference is specifically interested in what the alternatives are, we're really looking for solutions. And you mentioned in your opening statement the ACT model and the SPOT model and I was hoping you could speak to the experiences of your members in those alternative systems or what difference that could make to consumers.
I guess our view is that we've seen four deaths in as many months at the hands of police and I know that police didn't go into those mental health situations wanting to kill, but that was the outcome. We're seeing that consumers are becoming more scared of the outcome that they might experience if police are called. In terms of alternatives, look, we really like the SPOT team model at the moment. So SPOT is an acronym for suicidal...
Suicide Prevention Outreach Team.
Thank you, thanks colleagues. So it's not specifically for responding to all emergencies, just, you know, suicidal emergencies, crises. The benefit of that model is that there's a clinician and a peer worker working side by side together to respond, which has some advantages in that the peer worker has possibly been in the situation before or something similar. So they are able to support the consumer with empathy and the clinician comes with their, you know, clinician training. So as a team, that is a really strong team. They also go in plainclothes, plainclothes. Part of the issue we have with police response is they're going in fully kitted up with their uniform and their gun and their taser. And that in and of itself is a possible trigger for a trauma response in a consumer. In addition to the SPOT team, we know of, in ACT, that they have a model a little bit like that. I believe it's a police officer, a clinician and a paramedic. We would probably want to see something slightly different, so inclusive of a peer worker perhaps rather than a paramedic, to add that extra lived experience and empathy element to the response. Ultimately though, I think we really do need to have a discussion with both police and health because I don't know how they're going to feel about these particular models and I'm sure they all want to negotiate the ultimate outcome, but we would like to be included in all those conversations. Thank you.
Where is the SPOT model currently in place? Is it currently in place?
It's, yes, it's currently in place across New South Wales. I don't know how many SPOT teams there are across New South Wales. It's part of the Towards Zero Suicide project.
So it's a federal funded initiative?
State.
State, okay.
I believe it's state.
They're state, they're embedded in health, they're embedded in health. So they often, they're within community mental health teams. Over at community centres, yeah.
Thank you, sorry, I just hadn't heard of...
No, that's all right. Just to the carers, I saw you nodding along with the response, I'd invite you to answer the same question if you'd like or we can move to other questions.
Thank you, so absolutely, as a carer, our members and the people we represent, the scariest thing and the worst thing that could possibly happen is the death of a loved one when seeking help or when a response is put out inappropriately to a mental health situation. We're hearing that carers are afraid to call for help because of the inappropriate responses going out. So very similar, we really, we really support Being in this call of this situation needs to be assessed by people who understand mental health, understand the people who are experiencing that and that they are peer support workers who have the empathy and understanding through lived experience, past experience, extensive training, alongside support with mental health clinicians, to then be making the decisions and navigating that support and making sure that it's actually a support response and not a perceived threat that is, a person is treated punitively or as a threat, unless it is deemed so by someone who actually understands the situation, in which case, of course, they can call upon the police. Because what we're seeing is the, yeah, it's inappropriate, it's people who aren't trained appropriately and don't understand mental health.
Did you have further questions?
Yeah, go, sorry, yeah, go on.
I was just going to say, I suppose the thing that we see, we think is that, you know, building and maintaining trust with consumers should be kind of core business for the mental health service system. And I think that's the issue, that, you know, if you see too much, sort of too many situations where violence occurs, you know, carers don't want to reach out, but also consumers don't, you know, and that's already an issue anyway with some consumers and it's not just because, you know, they're experiencing mental health issues. It's sometimes because they've been traumatised by the system in the past and so they don't necessarily feel the trust that you would hope would cause them to go and reach out for further help in the future. So it's kind of tied up a bit with this as well and I think from a broader societal perspective as well, the more police are involved, the more, I think at a societal level, we tend to see people with mental health issues as inherently dangerous and this is reinforced often by, you know, certainly, you know, the mainstream media and I mean, I'm thinking television news, for example. You know, often there's this reference made when crimes occur to the mental health status of the person who committed the crime and it's like, well, but it's not clear whether that's relevant or not, so I think it reinforces that as well. So that's a broader sort of societal impact, I think, that this has.
Thanks. I suppose my question is to all of you, thank so much for making the time to appear here today, very valuable for our inquiry. Is there a centralised pathway that is integrated with both state and federally funded services that enables people to access the care that they need at the time they want it?
Who wants this first? I can. I'll say, no.
Bit of a dick's arse, but...
Well, no, I mean, if you think of, I suppose, the first point where people would enter mental health services, right, it could be emergency, which would mean it would be state services, right? So, you know, you might, you might sort of be in a situation where you feel suicidal or, you know, a carer or supporter has taken you because you're so depressed down to emergency, so that might be one point, that would be state. Another point could be your GP. So if you're okay but not completely okay, often people will go to their GP as their first point of call and the GP will give them a referral to a therapist in some cases, in other cases to a psychiatrist. So those are federally funded services, so you've got both a state and a federally funded initial point of access. And, you know, if you've been in the system for a period of time, you may well also sort of start to get services from a not-for-profit organisation like Flourish or, you know, that provides, you know, very individualised sort of things like daily living supports or, you know, additional supports that just help people cope if, you know, their mental health issues are quite significant. So, I mean, it's quite a messy system and the reason that I think we emphasise as well in our submission that navigation is required is that we end always hear and still hear that certainly for first point of contact, navigating the system is very hard. And I mean, I suppose part of the issue is it's stigmatising anyway, right? Even going to a GP, it's not comfortable, it's a difficult thing for most people, I think, to go to their GP and say, gosh, I think, I think I'm not doing so well mentally. I think it's much harder than saying, oh, I think I've strained my finger or I've broken my arm or whatever, you know. It's not a, there's not a stigma around that in the way there is around mental health. So I think those would probably be, you know, your kind of main entry points, right, within New South Wales. I mean, obviously, if you're homeless, for example, it might also be things like homelessness services, you know. I can imagine, for example, that, you know, say if someone's going to Wayside Chapel or something like that, you know, there may be connection points there as well into mental health services. But those two I've just mentioned are probably the most, you know, the most common ones.
So ED and GP?
Yes.
And is there, in terms of the presentation to ED, are there sort of, I suppose, challenges or failures that exist when someone either is, you know, either admitted for a short stay or in fact not admitted when they present to ED and particularly in the context of sort of self-harm or suicidal ideation? And then what linkage that then occurs for community services? Sorry, Rachel, yeah?
Do you want to talk a little more?
Oh.
I can say more.
No, of course, I, absolutely, so EDs are really ill-placed to be the site of a mental health crisis or situation. You know, EDs have the bright lights, the physical trauma's happening and it's not well-resourced, there's not enough beds, there's not enough spaces, it's not appropriate spaces. You'll have people in intense emotional psychological distress and their loved ones waiting in ED waiting rooms 17 hours overnight. And then you can have people jammed up in the system and waiting in a space like Resus, taking up a Resus bed, which is costing a lot of money taxpayer-wise and they aren't actually in a state of physical harm just because they're waiting for a bed in a psychiatric facility. So there's, ED is really ill-placed to be handling that and being the space for that triage. And also because the mental health emergencies is constantly being put down the line as to what is the most pressing issue to be dealing with. So people are constantly waiting for a very long time.
What's the alternative? What's the alternative? If they're, you know, obviously EDs are, I couldn't agree with you more, they are very ill-placed. But how do we ensure people are sort of seen and also then linked in assertively as an outpatient? For Priscilla.
Yeah, Head to Health would probably be my answer, together with a safe haven. So that is another area where Commonwealth and state services do meet in some, in some areas. I can give the example of Penrith. The Penrith Head to Health houses the Safe Haven. So it actually, and it's run by NiMA, NiMA? It actually relies on the CMO who has been contracted to run the services, I think.
The CLO is...
Ah, CMO, Community Managed Organisation, sorry. I know, there's too many acronyms, yep.
So that's not always the case, the Head to Health doesn't always run the Safe Haven.
It's actually unusual.
Yeah, for example, Safe Haven can exist within health. For example, in South East Sydney, local health district, the Safe Haven is co-located with the Recovery College and it's a really beautiful space, I encourage you all to go out and look at that. But also though, the Safe Haven model, it's not funded enough. So it's not open all the time, at best you're going to see, it's like, it's not a seven-day-a-week service and it's only, it might only operate between 5:00 and 9:00pm, for example. So it would be great to have that longer hours of service open more so people could go there instead of the ED.
Can I just add to that, oh, sorry. Can I just add a tiny bit to that? Yes, there's 19 Safe Havens around New South Wales, only two of them are open seven days a week. As a mental health consumer, I don't, I can't predict when I'm going to experience a mental health crisis, so that is not good enough. They need more funding. The reason that the Safe Haven in Penrith is located, co-located with the Head to Health, my understanding is because NiMA has decided to set it up in that way because they found that it would be more efficient. But it's not always the case in every area where a Safe Haven is located, that they can locate with a Head to Health or a different service in that, in that area. Yeah, it's just not always possible. The other thing I'd say about Safe Haven is sometimes they can be used for people who are experiencing suicidality as a waiting room for ED. So basically, if you're, if you're experiencing suicidal thoughts and you decide to go to a Safe Haven and the staff there feel that you do need to go to ED, they can ring the ED, providing it's not that far away, of course, it's probably different in an urban area to a regional or rural area. So they can ring ahead and say, we have this person who we think needs to be admitted. When do you think you can find space for them? And then that person can stay in the Safe Haven where it's much more calm, there we have peer workers. Safe Haven is run entirely by peer workers, so they get that, the compassionate support as well. But some, some of them, like we're in Penrith where it's co-located, they have access to clinicians. So that's the other thing I'd say, it's a nicer place to wait, more calm place to wait for people who are feeling upset or in crisis than in an ED. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If I could just jump in with one question in relation to the ED. I, I am aware, I believe there is at least one hospital in the Greater Sydney area where there is a specialised two-bed psychiatric ED. So that if somebody presents at ED, there are two beds put aside, no longer than a two, three-day stay. Is that sort of, given that ED is often the place that people will go or be taken if it's a time of crisis, is some sort of specialised place within ED, would that be an appropriate model?
I think, you know, a number of hospitals have what they call PECC units and they're psychiatric emergency care units, which it sounds like you're referring to. But again, you won't really get into even those units, right? So they're, they're kind of like a side sort of area of an emergency department unless you've been judged to be experiencing, you know, severe enough symptoms, basically. So there's, there's kind of, you can say that the people who go into emergency for mental health issues, you know, some will stay maybe for five, six, seven, eight hours and then they'll be told, oh no, I think, I think you're okay now, off you go. Some will go into PECC for a day or two and some will go into inpatient. So, you know, that's that kind of transition, so...
So you're still going to jump the triage hoops?
That's right, so it's kind of like a, I think in a way, the people, it seems to me, the people who get told, oh no, you're okay, go home now are the ones who you worry most about, right? Because you think, well, gosh, they should be connected up somehow with some other service. Because if, say for example, you presented in emergency with, you know, experiencing suicidality, obviously there's something not going quite right in your life and you probably would benefit from a little bit of support. Maybe it's not a psychologist, maybe it's a social worker, you know. So that's this sort of sense that there's a need for better connection, you know, so that people go, oh, okay, well, that's your problem. We can't deal with that, but this service over here will. So it would be good to see really, you know, better referrals and connections between, you know, say, emergency and other services. I mean, I suppose not to go on about suicidality, but also suicidality is a complex thing because sometimes it's something you experience because of, you know, social factors, I've lost my house, I've, I've, you know, my wife has dumped me, you know, these kinds of things and other times it's not. It's because you're really struggling with depression or, you know, you're really struggling with a personality issue. So it, it, it's kind of an odd thing, you know, sometimes it's not always a psychologist or a psychiatrist who's the best one to treat.
Yeah, so you have, you have an external sort of shock, for want of a better word, or something that's endemic and you're saying you need to differentiate between those two things.
Well, I think it's important to recognise both, both can be causes. So, you know, suicidality isn't, it's a mental health issue in some cases or a symptom of underlying mental health issues in some cases, but in other cases it's more a symptom of the fact that, you know, you're struggling in other ways and it can be things like losing a job, losing a house, having your relationship break down.
So if I may, the, you know, the treatment here or the prevention is not just mental health care as it looks, but also ensuring that we have housing and education and services and ability for people to live good and happy lives. And that is something that the New South Wales Government is also, needs to do across the board, not just in terms of a really obvious mental health approach as well.
But if, I mean, if we just cut to the chase in terms of the evidence, I think what we're hearing is, is that mental health has been treated as a second-class citizen in terms of resourcing and funding.
Absolutely.
As a by-product of the overall physical health system, for want of a better word. And then, so, so what needs to happen is that there needs to be dedicated, trained, qualified people like Safe Haven who are resourced to look at this as a specialist care rather than just flicking them off to ED in the hope that it'll go away. I mean, that's pretty much the evidence, isn't it?
Hundred percent.
Well, I mean, a lot of ED staff aren't very well-trained in terms of mental health either, right? So of course they have psychiatric registrars and they're trained, but a lot of the staff won't be. So it's, it's, you know, they're not necessarily the best placed.
Well, and in regional places, they, they won't have a psychiatric registrar, in fact.
That's right, no, that's right, clearly, that's right, yeah, definitely.
Mrs Carter was waiting to...
No, I just wanted to go back to that issue of suicidality. And I understand if you don't feel that you're able to make a comment on this. I wonder, there are a group of people who will present and they will be able to say, I feel that I may take my life. But I wonder about that other group of people who are feeling that way but are not able to reach out and express that and if there's anything that can be done to support that group of people who don't present at ED, who don't turn up at a Safe Haven and how we can identify and, I suppose, empower those people to reach out.
Can I jump in here? Safe Havens have not been very well advertised or promoted in the community. Not many people know about them. I'm still surprised when I hear that people have only just heard about Safe Havens. In part, to be fair, they've only been around for, I think, a couple of years. But I think a better job needs to be done so that people know that they exist and then can use that service.
And you think that would help people who don't feel they can articulate their suicidal ideation?
I think consumers need to access support of their own... Yeah, like, they have to choose to, to access support.
Yeah, may I, thank you. It's, it's also about information and access. So I think a lot of the ti, well, it seems that a lot of the time people rock up to ED or make the triple zero call. One, because the situation has escalated so much because they didn't have any other service they knew about or support... Or support mechanisms to prevent that. Uh, uh, really, a lot of hospital presentations are preventable if people get the care earlier on. Um it's also about um systems being coordinated, we're seeing so much siloing. Um where people rock up and then an E D isn't referring on. But it's also though, the people who aren't necessarily going to E D or, um as you say, um articulating their suicidality. Um there's, there's not appropriate, they don't know about where to go for help. But also because that doesn't exist. We, there's just really the, or they exist like Safe Haven and they're not in the area, they're not well-resourced, they're not promoted. Yep.
I'd also like to sort of speak about the silos beyond just the mental health system, you know. You have people from all walks of life going through traumas, especially following the, the pandemic, who are for the first time becoming homelessness. People who are experiencing domestic violence, something that um, that is extremely traumatic and impactful in their lives. Who don't have the kind of mental health language, who lack the access and information. But they're interacting with other government services who have, you know, uh the capacity and the, should have the capacity and the ability. To recognize these issues and start connecting people in the, 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 um, you know, the social determinants of health, like across the board. Are all in government services and we could be doing more to recognize mental health in all those spaces.
And something you've all mentioned in your responses to other questions is the role of um, um, of a huge range of different types of clinicians. Um so, um, you know, psychiatrists, psychiatric registrars, GPs, social workers, counselors, nurses, peer workers. Um and something I noted in the submission uh from the carers specifically was about um the sort of wrong door problem. Where because you've already got um ca- care in a binary sense, because one clinician is already involved in someone's care. That the service will then say, no, we can't support you. So I was, I was hoping you could speak to, to sort of the, the different parts of care that can be provided by those different sorts of professionals. Or the need to actually have different members of that team involved. Do you, do you wanna speak to, um, do you wanna speak to, do you want me to?
You can start.
Okay. Um, yeah, so we were seeing that take for instance, uh a, a rural location. Which is in part serviced by um maybe a state and uh C M O services. And um in, but because the state-based services don't include, say, a dietitian. But the community-managed service uh does. The person and their family are rocking up to the community-managed organization, but because they're already, they're linked in to the state. The C M O has gone, well, no, you stay over there, but uh the, the nearest dietitian is two hundred kilometers away. So there's not this coordination and it, it speaks a lot to the under-resourcing of. Um the care coordinators, uh the, the, they're, they're stretched. They, they don't have enough resources to talk to outside services to build those relationships and connections. And we really, we found that, um, you know, we want these strong, vibrant communities. That, that have all these services that are very accessible. Um but there seems to be these, these blockages of, if you're linked into the public sector, you can't go private. Even if it's, uh, if it was something that would actually match up.
Yeah, just to add to that, the other big one that we saw was um N D I S, people who were previously or, you know, were currently linked in with um. You know, community mental health services, any state-based services which provide, you know, clinical care. As soon as they receive an N D I S package, the state-based services who do not have, um, you know, the funding and the resources to see every client who comes through. Their doors, um immediately says, okay, well, you've got, you've got support elsewhere. We're going to have to take you off of our books and let somebody else in. But the N D I S was never designed that way, it's not designed to deliver clinical services. It is designed to sit alongside state-based mental health services and that's just not how it's worked out. Um that's not, you know, what carers and consumers are experiencing.
I mean, I think, I think the sense with, with state-based services for mental health is that they're generally structured around crisis management. That's kind of what they do, so you know, their focus is on providing acute care in hospitals. And PEC is acute care as well, but much shorter term. And providing community mental health services that usually are provided by and large to people who, who just left. Um inpatient and who, you know, either need to rebuild their daily living skills. Or are likely to go back into inpatient if they don't have more support. So and, and as, as um Katie was saying, they're very thin on the ground. So it generally tends to be a risk calculation, okay, well, this person is going to end up back in, inpatient if we don't help them. Gosh, we better help them. It's, I don't think it's because they don't have goodwill, I mean, that's not what I'm suggesting, but they just don't have the funds to have resources to expand enough. So I think, I think that's sort of the thing that I see often driving very much state-based, state-based mental health services, you know. And then as soon as you're sort of seen as not needing acute services, you go towards services which are more kind of federally funded. Like, um, you know, getting your ten to twenty therapy sessions, for example, you know, on the basis of a mental health care plan. So, um, yeah, but, but it's definitely, there, there's a real lack of attention, I think, to prevention.
Yeah.
State-based services, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, no, sorry, you were about to.
I was just gonna say, we, mental health care is called about the missing middle to deep end. That you can either be, you know, e- e- experiencing acute crisis and admitted into state-based mental health services. Or you can be living fairly well in the community, needing, you know, limited supports and you're supported by federally-based services. But that missing middle that is non-acute but needs more ongoing support, yeah, it's missing, basically.
Um, I suppose what, what interests me is, um, so there's two pieces here. There's the, the overall um quantum of funding, whether it's federal or state-based. As a proportion to the relative damage that mental health does to society. So for example, this morning, um we were talking to some people who said that the mental health budget for the state is, what was it then? Three.
Two point seven billion.
Two point seven billion out of a total budget of thirty something, thirty-three, so you're talking about ten, you know, less than ten percent. And whether or not that's an adequate reflection of the proportion of the problem. Uh and then I see by expressions, it's clearly not. Um and then you've got the issue of misallocation and waste of whatever funding there is. And whether that's a result of um overlaps and misallocation between federal and state funding. Or just pure misallocation as well, I'm just interested to hear your views on that. Because um obviously, under the current funding envelope, the first thing would be to use the current funding more effectively. And then, over a longer-term period, try and get that proportionality up.
Can you describe a little bit more about what you mean by misallocation?
Well, for example, if, if, if there's funding going to um particular areas of mental health. Which is not being used effectively, for example, in early intervention. And if we had the funding allocated towards early intervention, that would save us a whole lot more down the track. Then government should know about that because it's a waste of money.
Got it, we are of course pro um early intervention and prevention. Um. I don't think we've got a comment on misallocation though, um. We don't really talk about it in those terms. The way we do talk about it is that there's not enough supports earlier, which would hopefully and therefore save money for the acute. So, uh like, you know, like it would just, it would, it would save, it would save people um the heartache of having to go through some mental health issues. Because they would be caught early.
So what would be an example, like, right here today, for, we, we're not gonna be able to increase the budget right here today, right? So in the short term, what would be an example of where we could reallocate funds from, say, the back end. Of a, an issue with mental health that was dealt with too late down the track, that could have been.
But I, I think I can give an example to this, however, I think this is something that requires a, a really in-depth. Gap analysis and understanding of the landscape and what's going on.
Yeah.
But take for instance, what I said earlier about people ending up in a resus bed overnight. In a non-physically harmed way, um. Yes, that requires some, some thought and consideration and preparation and navigation prior to that. To make sure that they're in a s- a better service, um. I, I, I would, I would, yeah, I, look, I, I think that's something that it's gonna, we need to look at all the services mapped up.
Yeah, it needs to be like a mapping exercise and a study done. I mean, unless it's already been done.
There are several gap analysis underway right now.
Right.
Yeah.
Um they're all looking at slightly different aspects of the mental health system. I don't know whether any of them are going to talk to this particular issue that you're raising right now, though. Um certainly, uh, look, we're looking at the lack of um. Staff across all dis- disciplines, including peer workers and clinicians. Um also the missing middle, which I think it was Katie who talked to a little bit earlier. Where there's that, that gap, the gap in the middle between acute and very early intervention. Um I think a lot of work would need to be done to actually answer your question, I'm sorry, I can't answer it today.
Well, I'll, I'll say something, but, I mean, I don't think I'd use the word misallocation, but I mean, you do see a general tendency. To provide much more funding for biomedical kinds of treatment and that's not necessarily a bad thing, you know, psychiatrists in other words, right? So you can access, you know, many, many sessions if you're judged to be unwell enough with a psychiatrist. But on the other hand, when it comes to therapy, for example, talk therapy, it's much harder to access. And some funds have been allocated in very specific areas, like for example, eating disorders. But it's not true across the board, so, you know, it would probably benefit people who are living with complex trauma as well, for example. To be able to have much more talk therapy. And the reality is for some people, but probably not most, right? But for some people, it would be good to have supportive therapy once a week forever. And I mean, I'm not saying everyone needs that, right? But, but there's definitely a, a lack of balance in the commitment of those funds. Psychiatry is much easier to access than, than non-psychiatric treatments, I think, you know, in terms of.
Example, yeah, okay, thank you.
You know, and, and that means that there are certain models that are emphasized as well and that will be good for some people. But not for everyone, because actually biomedical ways of treating mental health don't work for everyone so well. They might work quite well if you are living with bipolar or, you know, you're, you're living with some symptoms of schizophrenia, but not necessarily for everyone. Particularly trauma.
Can I jump in, um, thank you through your chair, the, um, it turns out the matter of, of Pacer and SPOT and dealing with these uh particular. Um, um, points where there is a matter to be dealt with. Um whereby, I presume and forgive me if I've got this um description incorrect, but. Uh there's, there is an event happening somewhere and a phone call gets made. Um, now, I'm not sure where all the phone calls are typically being made, they've been perhaps to multiple locations, but a, a call being made. That there is something happening, uh there's concern about where this is going to end up. There could be the individual themselves ringing, who's going through the experience, or someone with them at making an observation and thinking there's some. Need for some immediate attention. The call gets made, in terms of the determination, um of how to deal with understanding. What the substance of the call is and making that judgment or attempting to discern. What is the best response or come to the, who's in that response group, but making that judgment. Could you comment on that about how that's being dealt with and how that's being managed typically here in New South Wales?
Are you talking about triple zero calls or calls to Pacer? Cause they're two different things.
I, I tried to tease it all out because this is part of the issue, I mean, who, who do people call, do they know? I mean, most people have embedded in their mind, if there's an emergency situation, to, to ring triple zero. That's typically a response, I think many people have. Um I think if you went down to George Street and, and ask people what Pacer is, you probably struggle to find anyone. So the question is that the management of these emergency situations, trying to work out how they are best done at a, at a macro level. The first point being to, is there a single point? And then that judgment made about then, what is allocated to deal with it?
I think I understand your question, I think generally from a public's point of view, triple zero is still the place to call. Pacer is specific to um police, so it's a collaboration between health and police. Whereby a clinician, my understanding at least, is a clinician sits in a um police station, for want of a better term. And um so police, so if someone calls triple zero and it's identified that it could be a police issue. Police will turn up, look at what, look at the scene, look at what is happening, um, um. Minimize any risks that might be apparent and then they call Pacer. So Pacer isn't available to the public to call.
Right.
Um and effectively, when they're calling Pacer, they're calling the clinician that is sitting in their police station for advice. So they know how to deal with the situation at hand, but that's only after they have assessed the risks. That's, that's the issue that we are seeing right now, um where police don't have. Any mental health training of note, it might be a few hours, but it's not substantial enough. Um turning up to emergency situations of, you know, a mental health crisis. Without mental health training and having to deal with a situation before calling Pacer. So they don't actually have access to the clinician until they've assessed the risks and dealt with the risks, that's why these problems are happening.
Yep, I also understood, um, but, but to, to obviate the situation then, if there are these calls to triple zero that get to the police. The police respond, um, is the proposition that we need to somehow make it. A, a judgment, I'm working out in my mind how this judgment's made, about that we send either the police in. Under the current model, make that assessment and then Pacer and then follows that way. Or alternatively, there should be an ability to get a, 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 a team in. Uh which doesn't have that authoritative presence and concerns for an individual and have it dealt with that way quicker. Because the Pacer step obviously has an extra step in the whole process, doesn't it?
Yes.
I pre- I presume you would agree that to get uh someone in quicker, so to speak, or a team in quicker. Would be a preferred situation, I would expect, the question is, can that be done without having that intermediate step?
Um, I think what we would like to see would be, in addition to police, ambulance and fire. As the places that generally would go out to different types of emergencies. There is a fourth team added, which is a mental health crisis team.
But what would be, what would be the decision-making process of determining whether they go out? I'm trying to work out what's going to be the, the threshold crossed over or the, to make that determination.
Yeah, so um by the example you've given is um someone's called triple zero.
Yeah.
And at the moment, someone calls triple zero, you've got the three options.
Correct.
Um, the thing is though, uh these calls to triple zero uh are, are going to not necessarily be made by someone. Who has an understanding of what mental health looks like, presents and, and has that understanding. So also you're, um, one, it's, it's going to be the training and the support and well-resourcing. Of the triple zero call center to be able to assess the situation better of who needs to be sent out. Um it's, uh, I, I, I know, it's not my area of expertise, of course, in my line of work. But I am familiar with um that service needing to be better resourced and um more support and training there, um.
But sorry to interrupt, someone's gotta make that, someone's gotta make that decision.
Absolutely.
About whether it's the cops or the cops and someone else.
Thank you, so um the decision I'm saying, of course, is going to be done by that triple zero responder. On the end of the phone, but they need to be able to have the training to understand what information they're being given. To make that call as to who to get sent out, this suggestion by Priscilla from being of a fourth team. Of um a mental health crisis team, it may be the case, it's more the case of um. Where are police most responsible to go to in a situation? It's not always the situation that you want a police officer rocking up to the fire first, you want the, uh, fire department. So in the case where it might be a vulnerable person who is perceived by the public or someone who doesn't have mental. or someone who doesn't have mental health understanding, um, that's that time that if the more Pacer clinic, clinical person and peer support worker go out and assess the situation first. Then, if it's deemed to be a threatening situation, involve police.
I, I'm gonna, um, ask a question that's on a very different topic, but just in, in finishing this up, um, I would note to members that I'm, I'm hoping and look forward to hearing from representatives from other jurisdictions where those emergency calls are handled in a completely different manner. And some of those other jurisdictions will be making, um, submissions to our inquiry. So we'll have the opportunity to pursue, to pursue those, that line of questioning further. Um, I wanted to ask a question to, um, uh, to both of you, but particularly it was raised in the submission from the carers, um, about community treatment orders under the Mental Health Act. Um, and there's a recommendation in particular that, um, ensuring involuntary treatment in the community is supported by counselling, therapy, rehabilitation and other services. Um, you know, I think it would be shocking to most, um, members of the public to understand that that's not currently the case. Um, and I was hoping you could, um, expand on that.
Um, it's, there's a lot of issues, uh, sort of interconnecting that cause what we've seen and what we've heard from carers. Is, um, part of it is simply the under-resourcing of community mental health services, uh, taking on CTOs. Um, predominantly what appears to be offered is a biomedical response, is simply medication in response. Because they are not resourced to deliver all of the things that are, that, that they are allowed to deliver under a CTO. Um, you know, some of the other issues that are happening is that carers do not have access to the treatment plans of their person. So they can't check up if the treatment that, you know, is listed under the CTO is actually being offered because they don't understand, you know, what's in the CTO terribly well. There's quite a lot of things going into this particular issue. Did you wanna add to that?
Uh, yes, so, um, it, it, CTOs really, first of all, we're really calling for, uh, the section of the Mental Health Act that governs CTOs in particular to be brought in line with a more modern understanding of mental health and for it to be seen as, um, the actual need for, uh, support and a more choice-based rather than coercive mechanism. Um, often is the case, CTOs are used as a first response or are overused, uh, population-wise because systems aren't better resourced uh, to be able to have these conversations with people and allow them to choose ways that they can be in charge and be able to have, um, uh, the, 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 the mental health support that they want. There's also a huge issue where we, we see, uh, on our looking at the section.
Yeah.
Um, there's a lot of gaps where there's not enough accountability of the CTOs when it, uh, 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 accounts to the community centres that are overseeing CTOs. Um, and this means that there are potential for, uh, human rights to not be as upheld. So, uh, we, we wish to see that community treatment orders are, are, are given a full review. Um, as to the principles that underpin them, the reasons and, and situations in which they're used and then how they are, are used as a mechanism.
We didn't add CTOs in our submission, not because we don't care about CTOs, but because being is extremely underfunded and you're seeing our entire policy team right in front of you across the whole state, across every mental health issue. Um, what we will say though is that we do think there needs to be a review process of CTOs with consumers. It needs to be, consumers need to be centred in that. Um, we wanna see CTO, CTOs to be trauma-informed, um, and that process to be trauma-informed from start to finish.
Thank you. I mean, it was, you know, certainly alarming from my point of view to see an increase in the number of people being con- both considered for CTOs and granted CTOs. Um, and this is a wonderful opportunity through the process of this inquiry to, to explore why that might be happening. And, and thank you to the, to the carers for addressing that in quite a lot of detail in your submission.
Thank you.
Look, I just had one last question, if I may, just to take you back to the discussion about the difference, the hole in the middle of care, the early intervention, the acute. Are there other jurisdictions, are there other places that, uh, which you're aware that do a better job of addressing the hole in the middle that we were talking about?
Um.
So, so if, if, if there's no answer, there's, it's just if there's somewhere else we can look, it might be useful, that's all.
I, I, I fully understand that sort of, um, trying to understand the comparisons and, and where else is, are doing it well to be able to, um, borrow from them. Um, it's not necessarily a geographical, uh, jurisdiction, um, but the role and influence of lived experience.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in the, in particular, uh, in the academic realm of MAD studies is really important.
Sorry, what does that mean?
MAD studies. Um, I, um. Sorry, it's not an acronym. It's, um, it's, it stands as in for madness.
Oh, okay.
In the sense that, um, uh, we have saneism that, uh, really influences a lot of mental health practices. Uh, and I, yeah, I would implore, I understand that we're wrapping up at the end of this submit, at the end of this hearing, but I implore everyone here to, to look into the area of MAD studies and look at lived experience academics, um, who have written extensively in, in this area, uh, as to different viewpoints to challenge some of the principles and issues that are underpinning, uh, policies, procedures and decisions that are being made.
Thank you.
I might jump in with the last, oh, you go, you go, Greg, go.
No, no, uh, you go.
I just wanted to ask quickly, uh, in the mental health carer's submission, um, thank you. Um, you've mentioned shared care arrangements which have been piloted in various places such as Central, Eastern Sydney, Primary Health Network, et cetera. Do you have any, um, comments about why that, um, is ha- or has the potential to greatly increase, increase the efficacy and where we, you know, what we should do about that?
Um, I'll try to be as brief as I can. I suppose, uh, for the ten or so years that I've been in the field, we've been talking a lot about, um, you know, care coordination and, and no wrong door. And carers and consumers tell us that, that, that that is not being like actualized. Um, that care coordination between federal and state and community managed organisations is simply not, it's not resourced to be delivered appropriately.
Yep.
Shared care arrangements is something that we are in support of, that would connect, you know, community managed organisation, uh, sorry, not community. Community mental health teams, um, with the primary care providers in, um, in the community, with the GPs, obviously. Um, but it's something that needs to be actually resourced to, to have like a, a quality standard across the state. Um, it requires legal infrastructure, it requires technological infrastructure. Um, it's, you know, the, the first and foremost important part of care coordination. And, yeah, it's gonna require a lot of infrastructure work hugely in support of it.
I'll just note, um, that this is a integration model. So you were talking, we were talking before about, um, the, the issues of that siloing and being able to navigate. Um, so the integration, it's resource sharing, it's also upskilling, um, general practitioners, um, with, uh, more psychoeducation and ability to contact a psychiatrist and, and, um, other things like that, so.
Thank you. It is twelve o'clock. Um, I thank all of you for the time you've taken, um, both today to share your evidence with us. And, and again, the substantial written submissions that you've made. Um, if there were questions taken on notice today or if members have, um, follow-up questions after the hearing, the secretariat will be in contact with you, um, regarding that. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, thank you, um. Good, okay. Um, I'd like to welcome our, um, our next witnesses representing Neuro Access and the Department of Developmental Disability and Neuropsychiatry at UNSW. Um, welcome. Um, could you each please state your name and, and position title and take either the oath or the affirmation?
Would you like me to make a start? Yeah, sure. Uh, so I'm Dr Janelle Wise. I'm a senior research fellow at the Department of Developmental Disability and Neuropsychiatry. And I'll be taking the affirmation. So I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Miss Anne, Annie Calagari, I'm sorry, Crowe, that's my maiden name. Um, I'm trying to multitask here. Uh, I'm here on behalf of, um, my, my business, Neuro Access and I'm a disability accessibility consultant. Uh, and I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you. Um, would you like to start by making a brief, um, opening statement?
Um, so thank you so much for the consideration of people with intellectual disability um, in, um, your inquiry into community mental health services. Um, so as you, some of you may be familiar, people with intellectual disability are two to three times more likely to experience a mental health problem compared to the general population. But we find that they face systemic neglect, as the Disability Royal Commission found, in accessing and participating in healthcare and in particular, mental healthcare. Um, and I guess we've been working, uh, across the last, since two thousand and nine, our department, to try to address this inequity and trying to meet these needs. Um, and I think where we see is that we are excited to see a shift in New South Wales and I think we are leading in this space, but much more needs to be done. Um, and I think for us, the key is, is that, as your previous, um, experts were giving witness to, is that involvement of people with intellectual disability. And I apologize for not having someone with lived experience with me here today, but unfortunately, due to the short notice, we were unable to bring them here. But I guess what we would say is that there really is this need for continued growth and consideration for, and consideration for what kind of reasonable adjustments can be made and expected of the system when meeting this need. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms Crowe, would you like to make an opening statement as well?
Yes, apologies. I can't figure out the video, is that okay?
We can hear you.
Okay, good. Um, I, I don't have much of an opening statement. Um, I said a lot in my submission and I'm keen to get into questions that the committee might have, given I'm quite a specific witness. Um, but just from a, uh, equity of an accessibility and cultural safety lens, um, there's a huge issue for the entire disabled community. Um, but specifically, obviously, I'm here today to talk more about the autistic community as an autistic woman myself and someone who supports the community, um, trying to access mental health services and also the NDIS and the breakdown in that interaction, um, and how complex they are. And, you know, we've, we've got right now a big, um, the National Autism Strategy is currently in development. I'm actually a working group member on the inclusion, uh, economic inclusion working group. Um, and that is obviously starting to address autistic health needs. But we really need state-based, um, mental health services in the community and outpatient to also be accessible, um, and meeting our, our requirements under the UN Convention, um, Human Rights Convention of People with Disabilities. So, um, yeah, I'm here today to talk about all the barriers that my community face, including, um, you know, accessing, um, booking in, navigating the system, um, you know, group therapy and how that's often quite unhelpful for my community, if not sometimes even harmful. The lack of neuro-affirming care and trauma-informed therapy. Um, and the lack of accommodations with, you know, sensory needs, executive function, communication adjustments. And, and just more broadly, I think there's a, a, a topic here around, you know, community mental health tends to be, um, the first point of call for a lot of especially acute mental hair cra- mental, mental health crises. And, um, I think there's a real responsibility there for community mental health sector to be aware of, uh, neurodiversity and what does neurodivergence look like in, including autism, ADHD and other neurodivergent, um, identities so that they can assist in identifying and diagnosing these and, and maybe helping funnel them through other support channels such as the NDIS, um, and working alongside that. Um, but yeah, I'll, I'll let you ask questions, so, and thanks for putting up with the no video.
Thank you both. And, and before we go to, um, questions from the committee, um, thank you for the time you've taken to, to be here today and, um, particularly to speak to the needs of, um, people with intellectual disability and people who are neurodiverse. The terms of reference of this inquiry is specifically looking at, at how we can ensure equitable access for, for particular priority groups. So this is really important evidence to help us understand that. Um, so my, my question is to, um, both of you to start with. Um, in your, um, opening statement, you spoke about, um, reasonable adjustments. Um, and Ms Crowe, in your opening statement, you talked about, um, neuro-informed care. Um, you know, that, those are obviously umbrella terms for a whole variety of, of, um, cha- or, uh, alternative ways of providing care or changes that can be made to the way that care is provided. And I was hoping both of you could speak at a really practical level to what that looks like. What, what does a mental health service that does those things right look like and how is that different to most care that's being provided?
Okay, yeah. Sorry, Annie, you're very welcome to go first if you'd like. I just, I just can't get. You let me.
Anyways, um, appreciate it. Uh, so yeah, so neurodiversity-affirming care is the, probably the catchword of the day. Uh, I prefer neuroaccessibility, specifically looking at a, a, you know, at a reasonable adjustments lens and human rights angle. But essentially, in a nutshell, uh, neurodiversity-affirming care means that you're giving traditional mental health care from a lens that affirms a neurodivergent identity. So rather than seeing a person who's autistic show up and, and innately thinking that they are disordered or need to change how their brain works, you're saying that it's okay to have a different brain, it's okay to have an autistic brain. And we're gonna adjust our therapy to support that and build on your sense of self and identity. And, and, you know, make sure that that's, um, protected from a cultural lens as well. Because autistic people, we do have a cultural community of autistic people. Um, and so neuro, in, neuro-affirming care or neuro-informed care, whatever you wanna use, is really doing that. And from a practical lens, um, and I mentioned this in my submission, um, the most traditional or most popular evidence-based therapy used is still cognitive behaviour therapy. And I think second to that would be, um, probably DBT, dialectical behaviour therapy. And both of those, but specifically more so CBT, has been shown to be less effective for autistic people and sometimes even quite harmful. Um, because if you think about CBT, for those who aren't aware of the, you know, change your thoughts, which changes your behaviour, which changes how you feel circle of life, um, it, it's essentially, it can be quickly turned into you should change how you think. And autistic people, we think very differently to neurodivergent, uh, sorry, neurotypical or holistic or non-autistic people. And that's not innately bad. It, the issue that we have in terms of why we have such high rates of poor mental health and suicidality is really that among society, we're not included, we're not accepted. And most of the time, we don't have our disability access needs met in education, in healthcare, in employment. So really, it's a matter of trying to look at therapy from a lens of, well, first of all, we need way more research on what, what does work for neurodivergent people, which at the moment, the key thing coming out is that therapy based on, um, acceptance and self-compassion and self, self-acceptance seems to be, um, have the best outcomes for the autistic and population, which makes sense because again, that, that seems to be in line with that neuro-affirming care of recognising our neurodivergent identity and building on that and helping us navigate mental health challenges that are very prevalent for our population while also, um, you know, giving us that disability support as well and recognition. I hope that helps.
Absolutely, thank you.
Great.
Could, could I ask one follow-up question?
Sure.
Um, uh, excuse me, Ms Crowe, my name's Susan Carter. Just have a question in relation to your comments about CBT and DBT for people who are neurodiverse. Do you have a comment about whether ACT is appropriate?
Uh, yeah, I, so, um, obviously I'm not a therapist, I'm a lawyer. Um, but I, I work with, uh, many people in our community and have experienced these therapies myself personally. And I'm personally a big fan of ACT. I, I don't necessarily think CBT and DBT are off the table for autistic people. I, I do know certain autistic people that this has helped. Um, I just think on a whole and the evidence and, and research is supporting this, it, we need to be either adjusting CBT and DBT for autistic people or looking at other forms such as ACT-based therapy that seems to have better outcomes for this population.
Okay, thank you.
Anyways.
Uh, so I guess our recommendations would very much align with Annie and be of a similar flavour. Um, in terms of people with intellectual disability, what we mean practically about reasonable adjustments is that really true person-centred care and being responsive to that need. Obviously, intellectual disability is a spectrum, so one size won't fit all. But what we see commonly, um, is things around communication and that ability to use, um, non-verbal or augmentative forms of communication within mental health services. It also looks at environments that are suitable and appropriate. So what is that for the person? Is the room with many other people in it the best place to be? It is also, for them, a lot of it is around decision-making and consent. And we know that people with intellectual disability can face challenges when they intersect with healthcare sectors around this. And we strongly support supportive decision-making where we allow people to make all decisions possible. Another reasonable adjustment, I think, comes through time and time again, is the role of the person's support network and allowing time and place for that to be there. That meaning that it's a fine line we tread between hearing the voice of the person and allowing their support network to be there and support them in a positive and not a negative way. Another key thing we think about is the types of treatments provided. And I too am not a specialist clinician in this space, but we do see incorrect usage of psychotropic medications for non-mental health concerns. And that's something that people raise with us repeatedly.
I just had a follow-up question to that. You were talking about the inclusion of somebody's support network in decision-making. We had quite an interesting discussion this morning with carers of people with mental health conditions and discussed their experiences of inclusion or exclusion from that process. So I was hoping you could speak to, I suppose, what best practice looks like for the inclusion of carers.
Yeah, I mean, for my personal opinion is that inclusion looks like being driven by the person and their preferences and will unless there's a very strong reason to be against that. So person-centred care for me comes first and foremost, but acknowledgement, the role of the family and support network outside of that.
Were there questions from other members of the committee? Mr. Donlon?
Yes, thank you. I think you're on. No. With respect to Dr. Wise, and thank you, that's a very helpful submission with some very rich content. Can I just take you to page five, go into page six, specifically going to the question of recommendations. The committee, as I'm sure you appreciate, deliberates and receives submissions, oral evidence, answers the question on notice and supplementary questions, and we analyse all of that and then hopefully come out of that is the recommendations. Would you like to, or if I put it to you this way, if you had top two or three recommendations, I know that's a pretty crude way of putting it, but if this committee could endorse your top two or three recommendations, what would you put forward? Be ambitious.
Be, oh wow, I've got the floor.
For us to consider.
Look, I think for us, there was a big push when we went into community-based care and people moved out of institutions, there was a big push to assume that mainstream services could meet the needs of people with intellectual disability. And while they definitely have a role and we need to equip them, I think funding for specialist supports and people who specialise in this area that can intersect and support both the person and the mainstream sector as we continue to build would be one of my top recommendations. And you note that we have been involved in evaluating two different specialist services in New South Wales. And they're showing great promise, both in terms of for the person and their family when they interact, but also for equipping the sector. So they play a nice dual role. I definitely am not arguing for specialist services only because I don't agree with that, but they do have a place.
Perhaps before we go on to interrupt, would you like to nominate what those two were that you've just referred to?
Yeah, so they are the Intellectual Disability and Mental Health Residual Functions Programme. So that was in the interim as we transitioned into the NDIS. And funding was given out to local health districts to design a localised solution to that transition. What we found in that was really that those localised responses were exceptionally helpful. We note that we're a very diverse state and what the needs look like differ, if you're based here in Sydney versus if you're out in the far west. And so there was many lessons learnt from there. The other one is around the two statewide intellectual disability mental health hubs. So there's an adolescent and child and youth and an adult services. And we're just wrapping up those findings at the moment. But they show great promise in terms of access both to community and a reduction in emergency department presentations, which I think is, you know, builds on from what previous people were saying here this morning. That's what we're after, isn't it? We want people to stay well and be able to contribute in society.
Of course, of course. Now, thank you for that. And Ms. Crowe, your top two, three recommendations, if I could be so bold as to say?
Yeah, that's a hard one. I would actually probably swing the other way and talk more about how we need more widespread education in the health system, not just mental health professionals, but all health professionals. Because mental and physical health do overlap very closely and our society is barely starting to understand the complexity of that. And I also believe that mental health, it's impacted in every aspect of healthcare, whether you're rocking up to a GP because you're feeling sick or whether you're, you know, going to hospital and having a surgery or, you know, out in the community and in crisis. I think we really do need to be more broadly educating all health professionals on disability, all disability and neurodivergence and what that looks like and what different access needs that means. And equally, I would be talking about universal design principles because a lot of the access adjustments that the autistic community need would help many other communities. Like, for example, the deaf community, obviously, that helps with some plans having Auslan or captions and alternative communication options. That also, a lot of the time, helps the autistic community. Many of my community, with or without an intellectual disability as well as being autistic, struggle with communication or just communicate differently and need alternative means. And then when you're in a mental health crisis, communication can become that much harder. And I think, yeah, that's two.
No, that's okay. Sorry, not putting the pressure on. I think I might have spooked it, Ms. Crowe, sorry.
That's okay.
Correctly.
That's okay. And I would also add that, I believe that, I was listening to the conversation in the last session about allocation of funding or misallocation, and I wanted to comment on that. I don't believe we need to remove any funding from acute care right now. I don't think it's currently funded enough to begin with. But I also believe we desperately need increased funding in upstream suicide prevention and proactive mental health support. So I hope to God we don't shift funding away from acute care into upstream in the hope that it prevents acute care because until we can get that system working to the point where we get a reduction in acute care presentations of people in mental health crises, then that's, you know, that's quite negligent. But I really do believe that there needs to be so much more focus on upstream mental health. And by upstream, I mean preventative, downstream means in crisis, in a nutshell. And equally, from, you know, the more broader mental health, I'm sorry, New South Wales Government, I think going beyond, you know, just looking at specific mental health providers, but going into, you know, like why, I've always found it odd that our schooling system doesn't include any mental health education. We used to have Home Economics a long time ago that taught some homeschools and life skills. That's mostly gone now as well. But mental health, you know, we've just been through or are still going through a pandemic and mental health is starting to become so much more understood or at least acknowledged and recognised in society, which is one of the more positive things, I guess, of such an awful global pandemic, is that people are no longer allowed, are sort of enabled to just sit back and ignore it. And many people who previously weren't affected by poor mental health have been. And I think that this is a perfect opportunity for us to look at the more, the broader system of how our government helps support its citizens in positive mental health, which has huge ramifications for increased productivity, increased employment, education, things that will boost our economy and help everyone. This goes so much further beyond people in acute mental health crises. And I think that that's something that needs to be really remembered at the end of the day when we do have these discussions.
Well, thank you.
I have a very quick question that I'm sure will be a question on notice for Dr. Wise, Ms. Wise, Dr. Wise.
You can call me Janelle, that's fine.
Janelle, thank you. Which was just the two services that you mentioned that were very promising. It sounds like they're being either currently researched or currently evaluated. I was hoping you'd be able to provide the committee with those findings once they're available.
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much.
I have a third point, if I may.
Sure.
To my top three. The other thing that I'd like to comment on is it's great to see an increase in co-design of health services and mental health services with people with lived experience. But I also think that it needs to be said that beyond co-design and really meaningful co-design where lived experience is included in every step of the process, I think we need more lived experience leadership. What we're seeing in the autistic community is the greatest impact any organisations are having on our community are led by autistic people. And it makes sense because having that lived experience means you truly understand what it's like to live in this world. It's like, you know, any other minority group. That I think all marginalised societies, more marginalised identities would benefit from that kind of leadership. And I think that that needs to be focused on, especially in terms of the peer workforce and boosting community mental health more broadly and investing in those organisations. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Wise, I'm interested, and perhaps you can help us with this. Dealing with people with intellectual disability, are there any issues of under-diagnosis of mental health issues or just, I suppose, not recognising that you can have multiple issues affecting the one person?
Yeah, thank you for raising this. It is a big problem. And it's something that we call diagnostic overshadowing. So that's whereby changes in the person are attributed to their disability rather than exploring what the cause is it. We see a change in behaviour, it's put as behavioural rather than looking into, does the person have either a physical or a mental health problem? Yeah, I mean, if we think back historically too, there was kind of a thinking around, well, people with intellectual disabilities, they can't experience a mental health issue, you know, that's not possible. How would we know that? How could we measure it? We know that not to be true. So yes, there is high levels of undiagnosed and unmet need in the community.
And is that, do you think, simply a matter of educating health workers? Or are there ways that that could be best addressed?
Yeah, look, I think obviously, mental health professionals do have a role. But also, we've been working to develop a tool that also equips the person themselves and their support networks, be they family, carers or other social services around what mental health might look like or poor mental health might look like in people with intellectual disability. We know that it's usually kind of late down in the process when you come in contact with a very well-trained mental health, the typical way of thinking about a mental health professional. And so we think it's essential that we equip all anglers and all people so that they can identify those changes.
Thank you. And Ms. Crowe, and I'm wondering, can you point to any existing effective models, well, models that you would see as being effective to support neurodivergent people within the community healthcare space? Other places, anywhere that we should look at for something that you believe is working well?
Yeah, there's actually, there's an autistic physician in the US, Vermont, Dr. Mel Houser, who has started a not-for-profit over there called All Brains Belong. And they run online Brain Club and community sort of gatherings where they're, sort of, half of it is based on connecting with your neurokin and the other half is focused on self-education and building those skills and self-awareness to help navigate all these complex systems. That's one that I'm seeing right now having really positive outcomes. And we have some similar ones here with Yellow Ladybugs and reframing autism and the work both of those organisations do, putting on events and producing books and writing that help our community. But we certainly could use a lot more. I hope that answers the question.
Just to follow up, if I may, do those models that you've talked about, do they deal with assisting people who are neurodivergent to understand themselves? Or does it deal with the crossover between people who are neurodivergent and also have a mental health issue?
So it's both. It really does go hand in hand. Most neurodivergent people have at least one or two mental health diagnoses before they even find out they're neurodivergent. As of 2022, eighty percent of autistic women were not diagnosed at age eighteen leaving school. So where most of, and in most of them, there's a lot of crossover of misdiagnosis and missed diagnoses, including a high prevalence of complex trauma and anxiety and depression in our community. So really, education on neurodivergence and disability go hand in hand with mental health education and support.
Okay, thank you. And I suppose the same question, Dr. Wise, are there places, is anyone doing it better than us and should we, are there places we should look?
Yeah, it's a great question. And I think there's still, it's quite in its infancy in terms of the emerging evidence about what does and doesn't work. I think what is showing up is that intersection between those specialist and mainstream models where you're working in a capacity-building sense.
And I note your comments before about what a diverse state we are. Do you think it's possible for us to develop models and roll them out into the regions? Or you think everything has to be, everything is best done if it's generated locally to deal with local conditions?
Yeah, I think what we've shown is that almost like the hub-and-spoke model can work, where you have that centralised support noting, you know, we're talking about finite resources that we have available to us, but that there is some capacity if you have that centralised specialty to reach out to communities. Obviously, you're always weighing up the benefits to a very localised response versus something that you can scale and roll out at a government level.
And one last question, if I may. Telehealth. Are there particular issues in dealing with members of a community with intellectual disability with telehealth when, I imagine perhaps, body language and things might be very important?
Yes, yes, that's right. And currently, out in Western New South Wales, they're currently running a project that's looking into virtual care and how we might be able to do it, noting the challenges that they face in distance in that region. But you are right, there are some challenges and for some people, it works fine. But for others, it is very difficult, particularly if they are using more non-verbal ways or for the other person to be able to read those subtleties and changes in their communication.
Thank you.
Dr. Wise, I was going to ask a question about something you mentioned in your submission, which was about the mental health information that's provided. And you provided some examples that, I understand, were sort of good examples of easy read. How widespread is that kind of information provision? Where have you seen it or where have you seen it missing?
Yeah, so a couple of years ago, we were able to conduct an audit of the accessibility of the information in the mental health space across New South Wales Public Mental Health Services. And we found it to be largely inaccessible even to the general population. And so in response, we looked at translating those into easy read. And, sorry, there was a second part to your question there.
Yeah, it was about, I suppose, where is it done well or where is it missing?
Yeah, look, it's, at the moment, it's very piecemeal and it's dependent on people understanding and having the ability to translate into it. I think New South Wales is one of the best places. We do have some information available, but it by far does not cover all of the areas available. I think there's also an emerging evidence, you know, we're still not really sure if easy read is the best way. There's really a lack of research into the best ways of communication. It's the best we know for now. But we note that obviously, people have varying communication needs. And so even something even more simplified may be required for the person.
Thanks. And just a follow-up, you mentioned that your audit showed that most of the information's actually inaccessible to the majority of the population. That's horrifying. Is that because of reading levels or literacy levels or linguistic differences? Or can you, could you expand on that?
Yeah, so what we were looking at, we were looking at primarily through the lens of intellectual disability. So we were looking at the complexity of the information provided and the reading age required. And it was very high. And we know that in the general population, that low literacy exists and that, you know, these adaptations that we talk about, you know, in that concept of universal design, you know, if we can get these communications right, they would help people with intellectual disability, but they'd also help a whole range of other people as well.
And my next question, Mrs. Carter started asking this question. So one of our terms of reference is looking at telehealth specifically because obviously, because of Um, because obviously, um, because of the COVID pandemic, we've had a massive expansion of of telehealth video and phone services. So we're we're looking at. Um, the risks and benefits of that more broadly. Um, but I I was, um, hoping to, that you could both speak to. Um, I suppose whe- whether or not you've seen telehealth being beneficial to those, um, particular population groups or, um, sort of what. Reasonable adjustments we need to be making in a te- uh, telehealth video or phone service.
I think for for people with intellectual disability, it it's still out, we don't really know. But in saying that, if telehealth is the only thing that is available to you versus no service at all. It's better, isn't it? It's something is better than nothing. Um, and we did see throughout the COVID that those specialist services that are referred to. Did take advantage of, um, phones, video conferencing. And what we found is people become, obviously, there's there's an assumption that you have access to a telephone and you have access to the internet and you know how to use Zoom and you know how to. Navigate all that. And so what we found is that over the kind of pandemic, people became more and more comfortable with that because they were needing to do it in more and more parts of their. Their life. Um, but I think there are risks involved if you are not able to directly see. Or communicate as clearly as possible. I think the thing that always strikes me is that in this area where I did a history project a few years ago. We talked to people who'd worked in this area for a really long time. And they kind of talked about, you know, we we live in a level of uncertainty. There's a lot of grey here for people. It's not black and white. We're often trying to make the best guess or best judgment we can make about someone's mental health state. Based on what they're able to tell us themselves, but also what others around them are able to report back. And I guess I just wonder through telehealth or virtual care. We we know that there is a difference to when you're face-to-face with people.
Could I ask a follow-up question? Will you?
Uh, could I add to that?
Oh, sorry, yeah, please, Miss Crowe.
No, that's okay. Um, I I, uh, concur with what Janelle says, um, regarding it's not, um, accessible to many, to everyone, but at the same time. Um, there's a huge population of, in the disabled community that do not have intellectual disability or, um. Technology access issues who rely on telehealth, including regional rural, um, as well. To be able to access these services. And from a universal designs principle, I think it should always be an option available. Um, from a physical disability angle, um, just getting out of the house sometimes is not able, not possible. Um, let alone often at all. Uh, and from an autistic angle, um, leaving your house, it it takes a lot of executive functioning. Which is, you know, making decisions and choosing times and keeping track of everything, getting there on time, going the right way. There's a lot, is a very complex executive functioning task to get anywhere. Um, on top of that, the sensory overwhelm of leaving the house. Can be really debilitating for many autistic people, especially who are experiencing, um, mental health crises. Um, or even just any sort of mental health, um, struggle. But, um, yeah, I think there is. I I don't want the, I don't want it to be missed in the conversation around telehealth, that yes, there are disadvantages around. Um, you know, people who wanna get on it or who can't get on it properly using the tech or, um, professionals. Um, wanting to have a more nuanced understanding of body language, but at the same time, for many of my community, it's it's the only option. And without it, they won't seek mental health support and we're losing more and more lives. Um, and additionally, I just wanted to mention, um. The, the rates of autistic people with, uh, a higher IQ are actually, the suicide rates are even higher. Than the broader autistic population. Um, and some of that, there's there's research emerging right now, but. Um, one of the theories that I sort of think holds a bit of, um, weight is that. Um, if anyone doesn't know what masking is, uh, masking is basically the ability to hide your autistic traits when you're in divergence. And it's something that, um, the higher IQ you have, generally the access to being able to mask is more prominent. And it's seen as a privilege because if you can mask your autistic traits, you're therefore less forced to deal with discrimination. As much as if you weren't able to do that. And it has a very, very double-edged sword because people who mask. Are at highest risks of, um, burnout and suicidality, um, and really complex mental health. It hit, it has a, it takes a to, a very large toll, um, on the population and, um, I guess there's, there's this. I I just wanted to mention that for anyone who is not aware because I think, you know, we're we're starting to understand. Um, intellectual disability and autism often gets put together with that, even though. Um, there's a very significant, or majority of the autistic population do not have intellectual disability. And at the same time, we need to recognise those who are both autistic with intellectual disability or any other disabilities that intersect. Um, and that's just something to also be aware of.
Thank, thank you. And if I could ask a follow-up question to that, uh, Miss Crowe. Uh, there was some discussion with some witnesses earlier in relation to not just telehealth, but actually. Communicating in ways perhaps that, um, where the person who was ill felt more control over the conversation, for example. The use of of text or perhaps even.
Yeah.
Emails, so there was time to process what had been said and then time to control what was sent back. Do you have any comments in relation to the neurodiverse community in relation to using methods such as. Uh, texts, text lines rather than phone lines or, uh, email?
Absolutely. Yeah, uh, that's, uh, absolutely another accessibility, um, uh, issue that my community is with because. Um, speech is not always a thing. And also I think you you mentioned control there and I think control and autonomy are two very important things that. Um, are often taken away from people struggling with mental health issues and and crises and. It's, it's something that I think, um, sort of speaks to trying to. Use trauma-informed care as well. But, um, specifically around communication, I think having options around. Emails and text-based is incredible. I mean, um, even if it was telehealth, having the option to use an AAC device. Um, which is either text or image-based is another thing that can be really helpful.
Sorry, could you tell me what an AAC device is?
Uh, oh god, I'm trying to think what the acronym stands for.
Oh, would just just explain.
All make, uh, so basically you can have, it can be on an iPad or it can be, uh, physical paper. And it can be pi- images and pictures and you point to them, or it can be text and you press buttons and it speaks for you. Um, there's lots of different types of AAC devices, but essentially it's a communication assistant, um, device.
Great, tha- tha- thank you, uh, thank you for explaining that. Uh, uh, so, and could I, Doctor Wise, ask you a question? Just in relation to telehealth. I, I think with people with mental health, there's always a tension between those who are caring for them and. The, the person themselves having autonomy. I imagine these issues are perhaps magnified if you have somebody with an intellectual disability. Are there any issues in relation to using telehealth for people with an intellectual disability and mental health issues? I suppose in relation to them controlling who has access to the information. Depending where, how able they are to access the telehealth themselves, or just perhaps if you could sort of speak about that whole issue.
Yes, and I think you are right. And I think it talks to the diversity of the person. You can have a person with a very mild intellectual disability. This is someone with very severe and profound. You may like to talk to Sane, who are currently running a trial, uh, using, um, online. Um, mechanisms of supporting people with intellectual disability. Um, and I believe that's funded by the Department of Health. Um, and they're looking at, yeah, those different uses of telephone, um, text, email. Um, and using their more peer workers, um, with them. But I unfortunately can't comment directly other than to note that, yes, there would be challenges. In this space.
And and in, with respect to peer workers, we've, I'm familiar with peer workers, um, in mental health. Excuse my ignorance, are there peer workers in the intellectual disability field?
No, not to my knowledge, but it's something that we would strongly support. Um, and it's something that people talk to us again. Um, and like Annie was mentioning, it's having those people that you identify with and who truly understand. Your experience. Um, some people object to that and say to us, well, this person has a cognitive impairment, how could they take on the role of a peer support? I would argue that they could if they had the right supports around them and that we can all benefit from sharing our own lived experience. Um, but it is something that repeatedly comes up, is something that people would like to contribute to in society as well.
I was gonna ask a very different question, so if you have a follow-up, you go first.
Oh, well, no, it was just really, uh, slightly related, I suppose. I just wondered if you had any comments on the importance of care as supporting, um. People in the community with which you work.
Yes, um, so, so they do play a key role. Um, and I guess they they, for people with intellectual disability, perhaps. More generally play a supporting role in accessing and navigating services. But when people are experiencing a mental health crisis, they do play that essential piece. And what people talk to us is often this triad that they experience when they're engaging. Uh, with sectors and that they really want the health system to, to work with them as a person, but also to work with their support network. And to recognise the the value of what they are also bringing to the table and that their lived experience of being a carer of the person.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I had a question on a very different note. Um, something that came up, um, a few times this morning was the, um, intersectional lack thereof. Between the NDIS and, um, state-based mental health services. And, um, you mentioned that in your submission as well, Doctor Wise. Um, so I was hoping we could, um, discuss that in more detail. So what, what are some of the, um, issues that you're aware of with that, the way that system's working at the moment?
Yeah, and and I think, yeah, I wa- I was listening as well. And I think that there is that disconnect in services. Um, and this tension that we see between what is and isn't funded by NDIS versus public, um, mental health services. What we would say is that where we see things going well for people is when these two service sectors can work together, can collaborate. Can work proactively. Um, so for example, in the, um, one of the residual functions programme that I referred to early. Some of them employed people who acted as that kind of navigator when someone was within the public mental health system to help them engage with that NDIS. To seek those supports that we know people need to maintain wellness in the community.
Um, so is that linked to, I know you spoke earlier about, um, sort of capacity building specialised support within mainstream services? Um, um, do you think that should then include that sort of NDIS liaison sort of role?
Yes.
Um, I also have comments on that, if that's okay.
Please.
Uh, so I'm, I'm actually an NDIS participant myself and a lot of my clients are. Um, and people come to me trying to access it and, uh, there's, there's a lot of change obviously happening right now in NDIS and, um. Uh, some of it's wait and see, but also there's a lot of things we can do proactively. Um, some of the issues specific to the autistic community. Is, um, more and more level two autism, which used to be much easier to access in the US is getting turned away, let alone level one autism. Um, and also psychosocial disability is, is intended to be phased out in the next two years, which was announced recently. Um, which is gonna lead, leave a huge gap for, I think, the states to pick up the slack in supporting people with chronic mental illness. Um, and equally, um, you know, autism is a, a diagnosis in the DSM. So a lot of people who aren't well-educated on autism think that it's a mental disorder, which it isn't. It's a neurodevelopmental disability. And it's lifelong and you cannot recover from autism. It's, it's not a disease. Um, it's, it's just how our brains are wired differently. And yet, we're also very susceptible to mental illness. Um, and a lot of that is a result of the inaccessible systems that we live in and the discrimination and stigma that we face. Um, but the NDIS, uh, likes to keep health and mental health at arm's length and they. They talk about the, the very separation, the separation between, you know, Medicare and health working to support. Um, anything related to health and wellness and NDIS being very specific to disability. And now my, my problem with that, that I see show up in all my clients and my community, and I've experienced this firsthand myself, is that. You can't separate the individual. People with disability need more accessibility to get. Mental health services that actually help them. And so if you're just saying, well, that's a health issue, we're not gonna touch it. And yet not give us any sort of funding towards making it more accessible. I think there's an element here where NDIS needs to take more responsibility on supporting people to access. The state mental health services and equally, mental health services in the states. Um, in our, our state system, um, really need that more integrated system of. Um, understanding how the NDIS works and what it is funding and, and equally picking up what, you know, we as. As citizens of New South Wales have every right to access, um, mental health services that everyone accesses, you know, they shouldn't be cut off just because we have NDIS funding. And vice versa. So there's this, there's this huge disconnect between them and, uh, i- it's something that I really hope is. Addressed in all the upcoming reviews, um, but I think it's something that the states need to think about more. And engage federally to make sure that there is that, that connection and support for all disabled people accessing mental health support.
Thank you. Um, are there further questions from any committee members? If there's no further questions, I just might invite the, the witnesses with the time remaining if there are, um, aspects of the terms of reference that you wanted to, to speak to. Or other points of your submissions that you wanted to, to emphasise.
Annie, would you like to go first?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Janelle. Um, yeah, so, uh, one of the terms of reference that I would like to bring attention to is. Um, the, uh, emergency response to acute mental distress and, um, this is something that is, is a huge problem. For the autistic community. Um, you know, as you can imagine, uh, it's, it's sort of a problem for everyone, let alone people with any additional needs. Um, but there is a, a very tense relationship with emergency services and the autistic community. Um, we still to this day hear stories of autistic mothers having their children taken away from them. Um, and really horrific stories about how, um, the behaviour that's seen as dangerous or harmful. Or adverse is reacted to and, uh, escalated when, you know, so much of. Just, uh, you know, autistic people in distress is really, can be quite simply supported by. Taking that view of what's distressing them, what in their environment can we change? Rather than what can we change in them or how can we medicate them or restrain them or whatever you wanna do. What, what's actually the cause of the distress? It's similar to, um, school refusal, which obviously isn't in the terms of reference, but I, I use this as an example. Um, that's been quite a hot topic this year. Um, school, school refusal, it it is not a willful choice for. Many children, especially autistic children, to refuse school. Um, Yellow Ladybugs uses school can't. Um, which is a much better term and yet we can still find something better. But essentially, the, the point that they're trying to make is that. Peop- that these children who are refusing to go to school are doing it because school is not safe. Because school is traumatic for them and it's inaccessible for them. And similarly for mental health services, so many of my community. I get messages on a daily basis from all around Australia and the world, from people who have reached out to places like. You know, Lifeline and the, the emergency crisis support lines or gone into their local ED. And had absolutely shocking traumatic experiences because they've been ignored when they've told them that they have autism or autistic and need. Things like low light or a quiet space or whatever, you know, insert adjustment here. And because there's such a lack of understanding of this and often those who can actually communicate it, including if it's parents for their children. Um, are are not believed and it's gone back to, well, I need to see some kind of report or. Evidence from a doctor that says you need these adjustments rather than taking them, you know, for the experts that they are in their own families themselves. Um, so I, I think that there's definitely, um, more that needs to be done in terms of how emergency services are trained. In, um, supporting autistic people and disa- disabled people in general and how we re- respond to that. Um, I actually personally called the emergency services, uh, for the first time in my life in May. My husband was on a work trip to the US and all of my supports kind of fell out the door and I had a, a small crisis. And I had a very positive experience, which is something that I rarely hear from my community. And part of the reason for that is that one of the ambulance drivers, um, was an autistic woman herself. And she innately knew that I needed a different approach and was also just good to talk to in general. Um, but my parents who were staying at my house at the time to help me with my toddler, um, immediately. My mum was quite distressed that police turned up first. And, you know, that's a very common reaction. Because to us, it's like this, this injection of maybe our liberty is gonna be taken away or people are gonna judge us. Or not understand our behaviours, which we've experienced our whole lives. Um, and it can be really scary to the point that many of my community don't even reach out to begin with. And that's why our suicide rate is seven times the general population. And that is just not acceptable. It's a complete breach of the Human Convention on Human Rights for people with disability in terms of not having. Safe medical health treatment that meets our accessibility needs. Um, so I just wanted to really bring attention to that, but, uh, I could probably. Um, so I just wanted to really bring attention to that, but uh I could probably talk about everything all day. The other thing I, I just lastly is um the integration between physical and mental health. Um, autistic people are known to have quite complex um physical health. We have much higher rates of hypermobility and Illus Tendless Syndrome. Um, and uh a number of other conditions. And anyone uh who has chronic illness or physical disability um is at a much higher rate of experiencing mental health um struggles. And I, I would love to see more focus on connecting the dots between physical and mental health, both in our service providers, education and training, and also practices and research. Um, I could, yeah, talk more, but I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a really valuable addition. And then sa- same question for Dr Wise.
So I think one of the issues we face is that people with intellectual disability can't be identified in the routine um information that we collect across our health services, which means we don't know what happens. We can't track people. And what we don't know happens, we don't see and nobody responds to. And it's only through our linkages at 3D and that we've been able to look at what happens to people with intellectual disability. So I would strongly encourage you to consideration for how could we identify people within our routine data collections? Also, when we look at outcome measures, the outcome measures that are currently used in mental health services are not standardised for people with intellectual disability. And ones do exist. So consideration, could we expand those outcome measures that are currently being collected um to be better suited to the needs of people with intellectual disability? And lastly, I guess, um, you know, we have your, your experience survey where we can track, well, how did people find that? What was that like? Um, and I'm not sure if you've looked at that tool, but i- it's very inaccessible to people with intellectual disability. And so you miss that feedback loop about what was that like for you and how could we do better? Um, so there's some of the key points. And I guess the other thing to raise is that, um, you know, we know the workforce tells us that they feel ill-equipped in this space. Um, and we, a few years ago, developed the Intellectual Disability Mental Health Core Capability Framework that was released across New South Wales. But it's not mandated and there's no check-in or buy-in to it. And so we get the people who are motivated and interested and already feel passionate doing it and being involved. But I guess I think further consideration needs to be given is how do we reach those people? What kind of incentives could we give to those who don't already see this as part of their core area of practice?
Thank you. I think that's given us some great questions to ask the service provider when we speak to them at our, at our next hearing. Um, thank you both again. Um, your expertise for the last hour has been absolutely invaluable to help us understand this, um, this issue further. We really appreciate it. Um, if there were any questions on notice or if committee members have um follow-up questions, the, the secretary will be in contact with others.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hello. I'd like to welcome our next witnesses um to the Inquiry into the Equity Accessibility and Appropriativity of Outpatient and Community Mental Health Care in New South Wales. Um, we are now hearing from representatives of ACON and the Biplus Network Sydney. Um, if we could um perhaps starting from my left, um, hear your, your name, your position title, and then if you could take the um oath or the affirmation.
My name is Jen Whitlam. I'm the Associate Director of Client Services at ACON. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
My name is Siobhan Hannan. I'm the Team Leader of Counselling Services at ACON Health. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Hi, I'm Amber. I'm the President of the Sydney Biplus Network. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I'm Georgie Fisher, a board member of the Sydney Biplus Network. Um, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Um, would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be, to appear before you today. ACON is New South Wales' leading organisation specialising in community health for LGBTQ plus people. We work in the client services team delivering statewide support to LGBTQ plus people in the areas of HIV, mental health, suicide prevention, drug and alcohol, sexual domestic and family violence and ageing. We are here today because the mental health system in New South Wales is in dire need of reform. It is buckling under the pressure of workforce shortages, staff burnout, services that lack capacity and only see clients that are in crisis, and systems where unfortunately people fall through the cracks. This matters to us because LGBTQ plus people disproportionately experience poor mental health and therefore disproportionately require access to mental health services. Compared to the general population, LGBTQ plus people are ten to twelve times more likely to be diagnosed with depression or anxiety, eighteen times more likely to have experienced suicidal ideation, and thirteen times more likely to make a suicide attempt in the last twelve months. These distressing figures are even higher in trans people, bi plus people, and LGBTQ plus people with intersecting identities, including First Nations people, those from culturally, ethnically and linguistically diverse backgrounds, and those with disability or long-term health conditions, including HIV. This is not because they are inherently prone to mental distress, it is because of minority stress, the persistent and ongoing discrimination, vilification, prejudice and violence directed at our communities. For LGBTQ plus people, many services are simply not safe to access. Despite this, we are resilient. LGBTQ plus people face this adversity with dignity and strength and stand in solidarity with each other to forge a better future for our communities. Our submission focuses on the experiences of our community and broader systems issues. We make thirteen recommendations that we believe would be game-changing for the LGBTQ plus community and for everyone. Genuine equity and accessibility of mental health services can be achieved in New South Wales if we are all committed to significant reform. Our key priorities are for a system that builds the capacity of the sector for trauma-informed, inclusive and affirming practice. Values lived experience through co-design and peer-led models of care. Reimagines its emergency response to be one that is trauma-informed. Enables prevention and early intervention initiatives and is efficient, coordinated and multi-sectoral. The key message we wish to share is that LGBTQ plus inclusive and affirming service delivery saves lives.
Thank you. Um, with the Biplus Network, I'd like to make an opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. I'm a proud bi plus gender queer person and so grateful to be representing Sydney Biplus Network. A volunteer-run grassroots organisation focused on improving the wellbeing of bi plus people through community building, education and advocacy. I should say upfront that when we say bi plus, we mean people who are attracted to more than one gender in any way, to any degree. Bi plus is an umbrella term that we use to describe, but is not limited to, people who are bisexual, pansexual, biromantic, panromantic, omnisexual, polysexual, multigender attracted and more. I wanna make it very clear that I very much see the current state of mental health care for bi plus people as a public health crisis. Bi plus people have extraordinarily high rates of poor mental health outcomes. For example, Australia's largest study on LGBTQ plus health and wellbeing found that eighty-eight point four percent of pansexual and seventy-nine point seven percent of bisexual participants reported having ever seriously considered suicide. If my voice shakes, that's because I take so seriously the responsibility of being here today for my communities. Findings like this are not new. Decades of research and decades of community stories from bi plus people about their lived experiences have been telling us that systems and services need to change. Despite the high rates of poor mental health outcomes, mental health services are not equipped to work with bi plus people in safe, effective or compassionate ways. Bi plus people experience biphobia and erasure within healthcare settings, including from mainstream and LGBTQIA plus-focused mental health services. Time and time again, we hear stories from community about how they are put in positions where they have to educate mental health providers about what being bi plus means. We hear countless stories about the biphobia bi plus people experience from surveys, from services, excuse me. And this isn't just in mainstream services, it's LGBTQIA plus services too. I think about the stories that I've heard from bi plus people who, when accessing support from LGBTQIA plus-focused services, were told that they should consider pretending to be lesbian, gay or straight. To be blunt, these services are failing so many of us and the burden is placed on volunteer organisations like ours, which have little to no funding to provide significant peer support to our community. So I wanna say very clearly that we're here today to carry on the legacy of bi plus people who have been advocating for so long and we're especially here for bi plus people whose lives have been impacted in devastating ways because they haven't been able to get the care they deserve. And I'd like to thank this committee again for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much for your statements and, and thank you to all four of you for being here today. It's so important that the committee has an opportunity to understand how we can improve mental health care for priority groups, including LGBTQIA plus people. So we're really grateful that you're here representing your communities today.
Committee, could, could we get a copy of the opening statements? Cause there's a couple of questions I have arising from them, so the secretary can arrange a copy of the opening statement.
Um, I might start off the discussion with perhaps a really open-ended question. Um, as I'm sure you know, our role as a committee is to make recommendations to um government for how we can improve mental health in New South Wales. Um, what, what would be your top priorities for change? What are the solutions to some of these problems?
Okay, um, look, I think um we, we did address some of that, that in our opening statements. And I think from, from our perspective, um, we, what we hear from community is the challenge of accessing services, the fear of um not being seen, the fear of being discriminated against. And, and something that I think will help the mental health service, service system is capacity building of the sector to work with our communities, to understand what our communities, communities have experienced and to understand how to deliver inclusive and affirming practice. So that requires resourcing of the broader service system. Um, it, it also includes and, and looks at valuing the peer experience and ensuring that that peer workforce is diverse, represents community members, um, is consumer and carer-led. Um, being able to access services like safe havens that, um, when you go into the, walk into that service and see somebody that, um, you know, that you can connect with, um, is so critically important. Um, and for regional and remote people, um, I'd like to highlight that for LGBTQ plus people living in regional and remote areas, there is a really, really limited opportunity to access safe and accessible care for them. Um, there's a d- challenge in, um, you know, being referred on to services like ACON's, but, you know, we're buckling under that pressure as well. We're, we're under-resourced. Um, and there's long wait lists for our services. Um, and the assumption is that we'll, ACON will see them. Um, but, but people should be able to access and choose to be able to access any service and know that they feel safe um when, when they do so.
I guess for me, like if, if there is one thing that I could get out, it's like the focus on the needs of bi people, of bi people first. Like two historic reasons, to how funding is allocated, how funding is allocated, we are an afterthought. We are an add-on, like, it's like, there is a service, there is a service that used to be focusing on gay people and now we add on and, and bisexual without considering what are actually holistically the needs of bi, of bi, of bi people. Like, there is no bi-specific service within, no funded bi-specific service within all of New South Wales or Australia that I would be aware of. Um, there is no, when doing any service design, any looking at any needs, looking at how funding is allocated, there is no specific bucket, no specific implementation plan that looks at like, at like bi issues holistically. This is impacting, this is specifically to mental health, but this is also impacting and touching on all the other issues and areas that do impact the, the mental health and health of bi people on a day-to-day basis. It is like the lack of information, the lack of information, like, there is not a single place, there is not a single place where I can go and find information, find information around like anything, literally anything. There is no comprehensive place where I can go and get all sexual health information that is relevant for me and my partners. There is no place where I can go that, that talks about like sexual health prevention and contraception and contraceptions and how, and how. So there is just, there is just, and those are just, just a few examples from the top of my head. Like, I could keep going on and on and on. That like, that like, there needs to be, there needs to focus on the need of bi people. And then we need to look, how can this be serviced? Does it need to be new services? Can that be sitting in existing services, services, services and be added on? Because that need is actually overlapping, is actually, is actually matching. But we can't, we can't keep going on how we have been going on because it has been devastating, it is devastating as the numbers are show, as the numbers are, numbers are showing. This is something that is known for decades. We don't need more research, we need action.
Um, both of your written submissions um spoke about the importance of peer support um in sort of different ways. I know ACON's got a lot of experience as an organisation with a, a peer support workforce. Um, and the Biplus Network, you talked about um sort of peer um community as a protective preventive um health mechanism. So I was, I was hoping you could speak more to that. We have had discussions as a committee this morning with other um priority groups this morning about peer workforce. I think it's a really important part of the conversation.
Um, yes, it is. Um, and uh we see a role for peer workers um in, in every aspect of mental health services, whether they be um, uh, peer-run services obviously, but also within the public health system and with any community health system. So an expansion of that peer workforce and as, and, you know, real support of that peer workforce in terms of, um, you know, training um, and a recognition of the, the qualifications that are inherent in uh lived experience um, and, and, you know, their own navigation of mental health and mental health systems. Um, so an expansion of that workforce, um, I think, you know, creative ways of looking at, um, you know, at a distribution of that workforce, um, where it will be most helpful. And, and particularly as an early intervention um strategy. You know, that is something that is a priority, you know, for ACON, um, you know, part of our recommendations. Uh, looking at, you know, how do we prevent uh mental distress? How do we, how do we provide early intervention so that people, you know, don't end up in crisis? Don't end up in the emergency room, um, don't end up presenting time and time again um with severe suicidal ideation, um, and so that they don't end up dead. Um, that's our priority, saving lives and, you know, and thinking creatively about how a whole of system, you know, response that is trauma-informed, that is led by people whose lived experience provides really, really important expertise.
And if I could build on that just a little bit, I, I often hear from people in our community about how the work that we do at Sydney Biplus Network doesn't just change lives, but it saves them too. So I think if I could really drive home the point that bi plus specific spaces are absolutely essential in providing those protective factors, in providing a sense of community and providing um really essential prevention, suicide prevention services for, for people in our community. And we know from being on the ground, we know from the statistics that we see that bi plus people don't always feel welcome in mainstream services or from LGBTQIA plus services too. And if I could just read um a, a quote that, that someone shared with us as we were preparing our submission. Um, it's bisexuals feel alienated in most spaces, not straight enough for the heterosexual community and not gay enough for the homosexual community. The feeling of never being accepted is damaging for anyone. Not feeling safe in the hetero or homosexual community has long-term damaging effects. And I think that really just so beautifully speaks to why it is what we do is so important. And we do it completely unfunded. Most bi plus services, not just in New South Wales, our spaces around the entire country are, have little to no funding. And so we're doing these things in between our jobs, in between our lives, in between managing our own mental health. And I wanna be clear that we are the best place to provide this. And I want to be clear that we are the best place to provide this peer support. We know what people in our community need, we know how to work with other BI+ people with incredible nuance and incredible compassion that people really, really require, and yet we do this without access to things like vicarious trauma support, without access to things like supervision that might be available in other mental health settings. And we're doing this, I mean, without any sort of infrastructure that really supports us to do what we can do best.
Thank you.
Do you mind if I just have a small, and then another issue of doing this in this way, in this way is like, it's also like, we are also members of the community. So A, for us, there is no place to go to do those things, but also, also being in the community, like, if you're going to a service with Akon, there is like some separation of, there is some separation of places. Now, if I'm in the community, there is like friendships, acquaintances with people, you know the people, you know who the people, who the people are knowing. Like, if someone is, if someone does not want their friends to stumble over those things, over those things, over those infos, due to the fact that we are so, we are so community-focused, so community-focused, which is a great, which is a great thing, but due to the fact that there is not, there are not enough of us, there is not enough funding, not enough support, not enough support, not enough time for more people to be there, which is leading to that really, really shitty situation that some people, that some people can't be, can't talk about those things in a more neutral setting, because all their peer support that they have available are their friends, are their friends, are their social, are their close social acquaintances. So this is, I guess, adding another layer on top.
Chair, can I just ask?
The honourable Lucy Vile had indicated a question earlier.
Thanks, sorry. Thanks, Chair. Thank you to all for appearing today and participating in this session. As you know, there's obviously a specific terms of reference that goes to a lot of what we've been talking about already. I just wanted to try and extract some more information, and you've highlighted some of the answers to these questions, but I just wanted to see if we could explore it in another level of detail, just about how well-positioned our services currently are in terms of their responsive practice for priority populations, and whether there are any structural processes that support this, but also whether there are barriers and inconsistencies to deliver any of this.
In terms of your first question, so the system currently, we hear of clients coming to Akon who, for example, trans clients who are being misgendered regularly within the system, pronouns, using the wrong pronouns for individuals, you know, there's a real barrier for our community to access the health system, and I think the LGBTQI health strategy is a really great source of information and requires resourcing to be able to enact the recommendations, to enable, to be able to enact the strategy, it needs resourcing. And that goes into capacity building of the sector, to train up staff, to train up the primary care system in how to work with trans people, how to work with BI+ people, to understand the unique health needs of our communities, and particularly the unique mental health needs, and just the different experiences that we have, you know, understanding that some people are not safe in their home because they're not accepted by their parents, by their siblings, by their sort of direct family because of their gender or sexuality. So simply discharging people to, you know, to unsafe environments, which is occurring, is a problem. So being able to work with our community, it's critical, it's life-saving, and I would say the health strategy needs, needs the resourcing behind it to be able to enact it. Yeah, excellent.
If I could just add to that, at the moment, it's a gamble to walk into, you know, any mental health service and expect, you know, affirming care. So you might be lucky enough to turn up, you know, at an emergency department or at a community mental health setting, and you might be lucky enough to engage with a worker who, you know, has an understanding of what your lived experience is, who is compassionate and sympathetic to what it means to have a transgender identity. You might find a worker who is understanding and, you know, about your sexuality, but it's literally a gamble. It is, you know, specific to the individual worker that you come across, and you might come across one worker in an organisation who is terrific, but the other worker that you are also engaging with, you know, does not have that understanding, you know, of your identity, your gender identity, or your sexuality. So, you know, you have these varied experiences, and every time you have an experience that, you know, does not take into account with care and compassion what your gender identity is, what your sexuality is, it's harmful. And so you present to a service in order, you know, to get better, and it's very likely that you will actually walk away feeling worse, because there is no guarantee that any of the workers that you engage with have gone through, you know, culturally affirming training that understands, you know, the diverse and intersectional identities, you know, that might be part of who you are. And that it's a huge flaw in the system, and it is causing harm to people on a daily basis. It's causing repeated harm. And, you know, we don't expect that if we walk into, you know, a health setting asking for treatment for, you know, for COVID, for our diabetes, or our heart health, we don't expect that every worker will have, you know, a completely different, you know, understanding of that health condition. But this is what happens in mental health systems, you know, all the time, and it's not good enough.
If I could just add to what was already said about the New South Wales LGBTQ+ health strategy, I'd like to really emphasise that bisexual people are named as a priority population in that strategy, which is most welcome. However, we're not included as any strategic priorities at all in the implementation plan. What we see is being named or referenced as having incredibly high rates of poor mental health. There's absolutely no follow-through in any sort of strategic thinking about how these services need to be operating, nor in any policy decisions that are made about our communities. And so the result of this is we've got so many people who are trying to access services in the mainstream and also within LGBTQI+ settings that are being burdened by educating the people who should be providing them with life-saving support about who they are. And that's just not acceptable. When people are to the point where they are distressed and seeking help, they need to be able to access compassionate, effective help, not be an educator.
Can I just, struggling a little bit, because, I mean, with Akon, Akon's been around for a very long time and got the reputation that served very hard over that period of time, and has always presented itself as being the premier organisation for LGBTQ+ people in the state and beyond, and does all the work that we know that it does. Now, B is obviously in there, LGB. Now, Akon receives around $13 million a year from New South Wales Health that funds Akon. I don't understand why Akon is not accommodating the B part of what they say they represent. I mean, is not really the argument, I'm sort of being the devil's advocate here, you know, isn't, is Akon letting the team down by not dealing with the matters that you raise?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we have this issue of Akon letting the team down, so how do we get Akon to address that?
Can I just, can I just like jump on the up, like, there is, those, is Akon letting the team down? Yes, but also it's like how the strategy is, how funding allocated. Funding is allocated often in buckets for like gay and BI men, which then in reality often goes into, well, this is the service that has been, this is the service focusing on gay men's, on gay men's needs, and is not looking at like what would BI men, what would BI men need? And then the expectations of like reporting back on how funding is used, is then, is the expectation to, for those things to be reported back in those distinct, in those distinct buckets? So there is, so that, I think like there is, this part is playing in it, if I'm looking from a systemic, from a systemic perspective, perspective coming up, I think that is one of the key points.
The money goes to Akon. I mean, the money to do with the health for the community goes to Akon, you get it. Now, you're directly involved and were the principal participants in the negotiation of the strategy, which you've referred to. So you're representing the interests of BI+ individuals in that negotiation for that strategy, and what's in that document, and also have what is the lion's share of the final say over the divvying up of money for the different groups within the community. So no one else does that but yourself. So is it really the negotiations got to take place to resolve this between yourselves and the BI+ community?
So, Mrs Donnelly, in the interest of procedural fairness, I think it's important to allow Akon the opportunity, if they want to, to respond to that question, but noting that none of you have to respond to any of the questions that are being put to you.
Well, you get to have your evidence, so.
Yeah, like, as, part of that question I'd like to put on notice, which is about, you know, the negotiation. Something that I think Georgie and Amber, you know, have alluded to is that, you know, generally in health, you know, we're talking about LGBTQ+ communities, and the difficulty when you're using that acronym and assuming that it's an umbrella, and that under that umbrella, everyone is somehow the same, you know, these are not homogeneous communities. And so, you know, the needs of, you know, different individuals, you know, who are represented by, you know, the letters in that acronym can be varied. And yes, you know, we receive significant funding, and that funding is spread across, you know, HIV, health promotion, prevention, it's spread across, you know, counselling services that are trying to meet the needs of the LGBTQ+ communities. And within that, you know, there is, you know, we are trying, you know, to combat, you know, historical, you know, discrimination and stigma that does exist, you know, within our communities as well as the wider communities. And so, you know, there are obstacles and barriers for people who belong to BI+ communities in, you know, engaging with Akon, and it might be a perception that, you know, we're considered, you know, as part of this one homogeneous community, and, you know, and that's not who we are, so therefore I am hesitant about approaching, you know, this organisation, or I'd, or I would like to, you know, my choice would be, you know, to see a service that actually is specific to, you know, me and my communities. And we are, you know, we are attempting to be all things for all people.
But that's what you thought to represent as.
And that is, and that's impossible, you know, it's unrealistic, it's an unrealistic expectation that we can be all things to all people without adequate funding.
So you're arguing that $13 million is not sufficient?
I'd like to add that Akon has advocated very strongly for mental health and suicide prevention funding, and only very recently received it. So we have not in the past been funded to deliver mental health, specific mental health support for people of diverse genders and sexualities. It's only a very recent thing that we've received this funding, and it's not enough, as Siobhan said. Our waitlist continues to be lengthy despite very little promotion across the community, if any, really, it's word of mouth. And, you know, we want to work with grassroots organisations to, because they are the prevention and early intervention. Grassroots organisations that meet the needs, that are with community, with the Sydney BI+ Network, Rainbow Families, Tricon, those organisations are prevention and early intervention, they create connection, and we need to work with them to meet the needs of the diverse needs of our community.
And if I could add to that just a little bit more, to really elevate what's already been said, this isn't an issue of Akon versus BI+ specific services. The entire sector is so woefully underfunded, so woefully under-resourced, and what we see about BI+ people's experiences in these services, in LGBTQ+ services, is not discreet to what's happening in New South Wales, it's globally. So it's a much bigger global systemic problem that I think working together to solve is really where it's at.
Just on that, through your chair, in terms of the process mechanisms that are currently in place to ensure responsive practices are provided for priority groups, I'm aware of Rainbow accreditation and other things, are these, are these working, and what else is there that is in place or needs to be?
Yeah, look, Akon does have Pride Training and Pride in Health and Wellbeing, so Pride Training delivers a range of online and face-to-face training to work with our communities. Some of those trainings are RACGP accredited and are available for health organisations. Pride in Health, sorry, Pride in Diversity is around supporting organisations to become more inclusive and affirming in their service delivery. And I think they're critical to upskilling the sector in being able to work with our communities. I think something that would help in the future as well is when government is negotiating funding contracts with the sector, with LHDs, with NGOs, is building in culturally safe and appropriate training for their staff as KPIs within those funding contracts, and ensuring that it's a requirement of organisations to be able to meet the needs of our community, going beyond sticking a rainbow flag on their window, but knowing how to conduct a safe and inclusive intake assessment with our community, knowing then what to do next, how to talk about chosen family, all of those things helps to working with our community.
I just want to give an example of, you know, how funding has to try and capture, you know, a whole lot of people with one sort of service. A couple of years ago, we had, during COVID, you know, we had a, you know, small, very small amount of funding to deliver a lesbian, bisexual, trans, queer, women-specific AOD mental health group support programme, you know, over eight weeks. We were only able to run it once, so it couldn't, it couldn't just be for BI women, you know, it couldn't just be for trans women, you know, it couldn't just be for lesbian women. You know, we had to try and include and capture sort of everyone with that one small bucket of money.
What, sorry, just on that, so what is the specification for the funding envelope then? Is it tied to like an amorphous group rather than individual groups? Is that what you're saying? Like, you're bound by the specification?
That particular funding was, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was the offering.
Yeah.
It was, you know, to deliver this particular support group.
Okay.
It did have, you know, a diverse number of women who, you know, attended that group, who identified both as lesbian, BI, trans, and had, you know, really successful outcomes. You know, we were really, really happy, the attendees, you know, reported, you know, great satisfaction with the experience. And it was focusing on, you know, alcohol use and mental health. But, you know, that's how we are having to deliver services, you know, we are trying to capture as many people as possible to, you know, to do something that hopefully will be helpful and have good outcomes for those people who attend. to do something that hopefully will be helpful and have good outcomes for those people who attend. But there isn't enough money, you know, to, for it to just be for bi women.
Would that be more effective if it was just for, you know, bi women or, or just for, would, would it be more effective? Would it be more better? I, I'm just, you know.
Well, I think what we're hearing is that it's something that's greatly needed.
If I may jump in there.
Sure.
It's probably, it's again, coming back to asking what are the needs of the, what are the needs of the individual letters? Like in our case, what is the need of the B? What is the need of bi people? And then looking for this specific need, for this specific need, is this something, is this something that makes sense to deliver as an individual service that is focusing on bi people and then maybe bi people of all gender, of all genders? Because I know also that like one of that, that splitting based on, on gender, like based on conversation that you're having down with the people. Like it does in many cases, they're like, it does not make sense. It does not make sense. I wanna be with bi people, with the entire community, depending on what the topic is. While for other areas, then yes, this might be more appropriate for bi women or this might be another thing that is appropriate. That is actually, no, this is for like lesbian, bi women, bi women, the whole, the whole group. So I think it needs to be like, what is the need, what is the need? And then it's like, how can that need be serviced? And also like in terms of, in terms of funding, in terms of numbers, um, according to the, um, to like different, different studies. But for example, the Australian Journey of General Practice, which is run by the, by the, you know, states that like ten percent of Australians are identifying, are identifying as under the bi, under the, under the bi plus, under the bi plus umbrella. We are talking about ten percent of the population.
So could I jump in and ask that that ten percent of population you've identified and more broadly the population which, uh, ACON services? Uh, I presuming it's not just Sydney-based, are there particular issues in terms of, uh, regional outreach? Um, and maybe you could discuss which regions and perhaps also touch on the extent to which telehealth would be appropriate or challenges using telehealth in delivering services in a regional context?
Absolutely. So ACON delivers services in person in Sydney, Newcastle and Lismore. Um, we deliver telehealth, um, since COVID, a lot more, uh, we've been delivering a lot more telehealth support um, to people across the state. Um, there are unique issues, I think, for LGBTQ plus people in regional areas. Um, we live everywhere. Uh, what we don't have is great data to demonstrate that. Um, we don't collect, uh, well, the ABS and others don't collect adequate data around gender and sexuality.
Just on data, have you got data for, from the regions of where people seek to access your services?
Uh, so, y- yes, so we have data on clients that access ACON services, um, and where they, you know, where they reside.
Yes.
Um, postcode of residence. Um, what we don't have is data on generally where the LGBTQ plus population live. Um, it's not captured in the census, um, adequately. So what the specific challenges are, I guess, is ju- is challenges in referral options, um, challenges in affordable services, um, people being able to pay the gap fee, um, to access their GP. Um, uh, and to, you know, there may be one GP that we know is inclusive and affirming of our community. So it sort of narrows, narrows our options even more. Um, tele, definitely in favour of hybrid models of service delivery, telehealth um, and in-person options is incredibly important, but we have to remember that telehealth does leave some people behind. Um, so older community members who are already isolated, um, particularly older LGBTQ folk, um, who may have lost connection with family because of who they are, they're gonna struggle, they may struggle with technology. Um, people living in rural areas may struggle with technology and also people who may not have a safe space. So if they're residing within a family environment or home environment where it's not safe for them to be out, offering telehealth, um, is, is a challenge. So, um, in-person services are great where, where it's able to be delivered.
Can I just ask on that, you know, that previous, um, example we gave of the, um, sort of lumping everyone in under the one sort of funding allocation? I just wanted to clarify because when my colleague asked a question, I wasn't quite sure whether or not we've elicited the accurate response. So did you get a, a quantum of money and then say, look, if we're going to, we've only got a limited amount of money, we may as well spread it across all these groups to get the maximum benefit for the money? Or did you say, or was it restricted? Was it, was it defined as the parameter of the funding? That's what kind of, I think that's an important.
Sure. So, so typically, um, when we submit a proposal for funding, it's in response to a request from, um, a, a department, Ministry of Health, Department of Communities and Justice. Um, and within those requests for proposals, they'll list priority populations. Um, and within that, um, the, particularly in mental health, um, and suicide prevention requests for proposals, um, the LGBTQ plus community is listed, tends to be listed as a priority population. Um, so we've put forward, um, proposals, um, where we deliver care coordination, counselling, peer work, support um, to the LGBTQ plus community. And, and from our data that we collect, um, we can see that we are reaching, um, the broad, um, you know, reaching out to Western New South Wales, Southern New South Wales, as well as the, um, the, the diverse population, sub-populations within our community as well.
Okay, so that, so be- because of that broad definition, LGBTQI, then you, you were kind of obliged to spread it, if you like, rather than target it to one category?
Look, I can only speak from the way that we have responded to, um, these requests for proposals. Um, other organisations may respond, um, differently.
Yeah, thanks.
Um, I have a question that's on a, on a completely different topic, um, but I think it's an important one, which is the, um, emergency responses to people experiencing mental health crises. It's obviously topical, it's been in the media. We've had discussions this morning about this with other witnesses and, um, I know particularly in, um, ACON's written submission, um, a quite distressing description of some of the harms that police intervention of course. So, um, I'm interested in understanding that, um, further, but also what, um, solutions you might see or what, what the preferred alternative approach might be.
Yeah. Um, our community has a complex history with police. Um, and, um, we recommend reimagining the emergency response to include mental health workers, to be led by mental health workers and peer workers. Um, it's so important that, it's so critically important that we have a trauma-informed response um, for community, um, when they're in distress. Um, we've had instances where, or heard of from community of instances um, or hesitations to reach out for support, um, when they most need it. Because the, th- they know that the response, the emergency response is police arriving, um, at their doorstep, which can be re-traumatising for many people. Um, and I think, you know, we have mental health workers, we have peer workers who are skilled, who it's their job, their role, um, to work with, um, community, to de-escalate, to support and to connect. Peer workers bring connection through mutual understanding and mutual experiences, which, which is just critically important, um, for our community.
Could I ask a follow-up question about that? If, if we had a model, yeah, Rainbow hypothetical, you know, unicorns, um, where there, every time there was an emergency response, there was a mental health worker who accompanied the police. Uh, would, would it be your recommendation that it would need to be community-specific? Because I suppose the challenge I see with that is it requires the call to identify the community and I wonder whether that would always be possible or even desirable?
That's a good question. Um, I, I, I think I'd like to respond with an example, um, where I may, had to make a decision to, to contact triple zero and expressed over the phone that, um, this individual was a trans person. I reiterated their pronouns and, um, and that, that, that this was requiring a mental health response. And unfortunately, the police, several police turned up, um, misgendered this individual and it created more harm. So, you know, I think, it ideally, there would be a, a response that, that was, that were skilled in working with our communities, understood, um, the importance of, of what it means to you, you know, to, um, sit with an individual and, and to have a workforce that reflects the community, I think, is, is critically important. So a diverse peer workforce and a diverse mental health workforce that can reflect the people, um, is critically important. In terms of a specialist, I think there would be benefit in having a specialist response, um, for, for LGBTQ plus people um, and having choice, service choice for people. Um, so where, where you are able to access the mainstream or the specialist would be.
And, and I wonder, could I ask if we had these specialists, would a bi person be happy if a, an LG specialist was there or vice versa?
If I, if I can jump on there, I mean, like in general, I would probably feel, I'd li- I would feel somewhat more at ease. And I guess it's also like, if we're talking here, we're talking very single lens. We're ignoring the fact that people are having, sitting on like a whole range of intersections that are compounding things. So if someone is like coming from, is like coming from like a cultural, you know, diverse background, background, if someone is like, is like having, is like sitting on, on, on a whole lot of intersections, like it is, it is like sadly not realistic that like there will be a peer worker that is, that, that will be a peer worker, I mean, have specialist, that is like hundred percent matching, matching my, my identity, my intersection, my intersections. It would be nice, but that's, I mean, it's not, it's not realistic. Um, so I think there is, there's that. Um, but I think it ties into a wider thing of like people needs, people who are doing those services, they need to be, they need to be aware. They need to be aware of like all the, all the, the whole range of, the whole range of things. And this, like for bi people, I can say, this is already not happening. Like I'm going to like, I'm going to psychologists who are supposed to be, who are supposed to be, to be LGBTQ friendly. And in reality, the sad truth is this is often means like gay friendly. This often means they know about gay, about like gay stuff, about quote-unquote gay stuff. But like, they don't know the nuances, they don't know, know the nuances of like, of like, of like bi people, of like, of like bi people. So while I think like in general, like, yes, this can be done by, by, I mean, any, any, quote-unquote, any professional, but they need to be, they need to be actually aware, they need to be actually trauma, trauma informed. And that is not, that is already not happening in the system. Like GP is like especially, again, if I'm looking at like bi people, at bi people, like so much of like their examp- eh, eh, expectation, if they're engaging with, with healthcare, with mainstream services, so much of the expectations and assumptions are made based on like how they present. So much is based on like their current partner. Like if I'm, if I'm seeing, if I'm seeing my GP, if I'm seeing my GP, GP now nowadays, and I'm assuming I'm having a girlfriend and I'm talking about that, I will be in the system, in their head, I will be, I will be a straight person. No one is ever asking me, no one is ever asking me, is asking me, are you, are you bi? And no one is asking, what does that mean? What does that, what's, what does that mean? What does that mean? How does that impact? How does that impact my, my need? How does it impact how my needs might change over the, over the years? When like in, I don't know, two years, uh, two years, I'm seeing, I'm having, seeing, talking about my, talking about my girlfriend. Two years later, two years later, I'm breaking up, I keep still seeing the same, the same GP, my GP is assuming I'm straight. I might have started going to things like three of, three of seven, going to like gay sound, okay, gay sound, I was going to sex on, sex on premise venues. My risk profile has, has, has cha- has changed for certain, for certain things. The services that I need, that I need, the information that I need, that I need is, is, is different, is, is different. But my GP would not be, would not be, would not be aware because they never, simply never asked that question. Because, because, I don't know why. And but also like then if I'm engaging with psychologists, psychiatrists, whatever, whatever, they, and even if they are supposed to be aware and have train, have training, they are not, often not aware of the nuances of what does it mean to be bi? And to be bi doesn't mean to be half-straight or half, and half-homosexual. It's like a hand, it's like a, it's like a distinct identity with distinct needs, distinct histories, distinct history, distinct history, histories, distinct experience, experiences that people need to be aware of. And like if we are sending a support worker, a mental health professional, professional, they need to be aware that like bi people might have different needs. And, and also like tying on like, well, if I'm calling an emergency service for someone, I might not be aware that they, I might not be aware that they are bi. Like depending on what their partner, what their partner is, what their partner is and looking at how little bi, how little, especially bi people are out to their entire friend circle, their entire social circle because of stigma, because of internalised issues, issues. The reality is that anyhow people gonna be, like even if we would be trying to perfectly match people, we would not be able to. Because, yeah.
And if I could just add on to that, I think for, for me, that, that education that people, that frontline responders really need, it has to start before people get into the workforce. It has to start in schools, in where people are actually able to learn about the distinct needs and our experiences. It needs to be embedded into their professional learnings. It needs to be embedded in the, the offerings that are there for them for, for professional development. It can't be on the job because that's when people get harmed even further, when they're trying to access support.
Chair, sorry, just through you with the time we've got left. Um, I'm interested to hear, um, from the panel, um, if you've heard of, um, the open dialogue model? Um, and whether this would be seen as a good thing, um, for the LGBTQI plus sector more broadly? I suppose firstly, if you're aware of it and then whether it would be useful.
Yes, I'm aware of it. Um, uh, yes, it can be a really effective model. Um, but as with, you know, kind of every therapeutic model and approach, it's not, you know, they're not best fit for every situation. Um, so it would depend, you know, on the individual and their needs. Um, you know, it's, it's certainly, there's, you know, um, uh, it, yeah, it's a, it's, it can be a very effective model. Yeah. And it, and it, and one of its strengths is that the model itself requires, um, a coordination of care. And, you know, workers, families, you know, the client, you know, talking to each other. And, and that is, you know, the model of care is that that, that conversation is, is essential. Um, that conversation is part of the framework of care. And, you know, in our submission, and I'm sure you've heard other people talking about the fact that the lack of coordination.
Yes.
The lack of continuity and communication between, you know, services, um, is, is a very harmful, you know, systemic failure, um, within the system. Uh, so anything, you know, any model, any systems, um, that enhance the ability, um, but also, you know, require, um, workers to talk to each other. Um, and, and to exchange, you know, pertinent information, um, you know, within the framework of consent and privacy and confidentiality. Um, but, you know, any, any model of care, any improvements to, to the systems, um, that, you know, require that communication, the exchange of information is going to enhance care, improve outcomes.
Yeah, go.
While I haven't, I'm not familiar with that specific model, what I can say with great confidence is that people really need, we really need reform across so many different areas. We really need whole-of-government responses to mental health care. We know that people in our communities have exacerbated mental health because of things like cost of living, housing affordability, climate change, all of racism, all of these things are really significant challenges that place incredible stress on the mental health system and for people who are trying to access them. So I suppose my, my response to, to your question would be that we need, we need responses across the whole, whole of government to really make, make things better for our communities.
That's the case for everybody, is it? They're all being right across the board, aren't we?
Absolutely. 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 Absolutely.
Population of large.
Absolutely.
Is under the pub and serving the bines.
I agree.
What a note to finish on. That brings us to the end of our session. Thank you again, all four of you so much for the, the time you've given and the written submissions you've given to our committee and for the work that you do more broadly.
Thank you.
I have one relevant question. Do you mind if I keep that?
Sure, I think.
A souvenir, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
We're going to work.
It's working.
For something still out there.
Of course, the setting is not settled.
I'd like to welcome our next witnesses representing Settlement Services International. If each of you could please introduce yourself with your name and title and then take the oath or the affirmation.
Okay, hi, I'm Justine Harris, clinical psychologist and head of practice management at SSI. So I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yeah, hi, good afternoon, my name is Ben Ben Azuz, I work for Settlement Service International, I'm currently provisional psychologist. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, just a reminder to you both if you could speak into the microphone so that we can hear you for the recording and broadcast purposes. But would either of you like to start with a short opening statement?
Yes, thank you, just SSI as a community organisation, social business and we've worked, we work across the eastern seaboard so and also into Tasmania. In New South Wales, we provide case management across a number of programmes, including our refugees resettlement programme, asylum seeker programme, employment services and we have a foster care programme. So the work that Ben and I do in the practice management unit sits across all of those services. So we are primarily existing to support the frontline workers when they're working with clients that are struggling with their mental health. So sometimes we work like a traditional service and provide clinic based service, but a lot of it's actually working holistically out in the community with those clients and the workers that work with them.
And most of the work we do, like my colleague said, is out in the community which actually is very, very effective in terms of helping the newcomers. And we have based on the time we have spent working out in the community, we found that there is a huge gap. A lot of the new arrivals has actually a huge mental health and they lacking those services.
Thank you, I might start the discussion with a very open ended question. As you probably know, our role as a committee is to make recommendations to the government for how to improve mental health. What, what do you think we, we should be doing differently?
Based on my own experience working out in the community, we know that people are displaced, the number increasing every year. And we know that there is over fifty million people currently displaced worldwide. And Australia has been so generous in taking quite many refugees. But we have also another problem with asylum seekers, which there are a huge number of them, million around the world. And this number is not going to decrease but rather increase. But there is a lack of services out there in terms of, for example, the new arrival, if I take, if I start with asylum seekers. A lot of them has been here for a decade, if it's not more, and they lack support in terms of mental health. Some of them don't even have visa, don't have Medicare and they're just left to their own destiny, I believe. And we take that kind of role and we try to support them, but we lack the resources ourselves. Because there are not so many psychologists out there to support this kind of client. And I have personally experienced so many traumatic events from these clients. I'll just give you a very simple example, where I picked up this client through a referral from correctional services. It has addiction, mental health issues and I worked with this client tirelessly for the past two years. From being suicidal to currently going to Cumberland Hospital getting treatment for his mental health as well as for his addiction. And he always turned to me, said to me, I see you like God, if it was not for you, I wouldn't be here today. This is just a small example of how asylum seekers actually suffer.
I think one of the things that we're really lucky about, because we don't, we're not tied to a contract, the work that Ben's describing with that client, he was able to be flexible depending on the need, a lot of the services are very tied to their contracts and then can only do a little bit of the work and then they try and hand over to the next person. So being and working with that client's able to, at one stage you were at the hospital with the client translating because there was no interpreter available. You've got an employment background, so you're able to know how important not disregarding his employment needs. And, you know, even if it's under the table work, but we're fighting for clients. So what we find with the, our colleagues is that their contracts mean that often we're in a big meeting and there's lots of people being funded. But their criteria excludes a lot of people and then clients who don't understand the system or the language then fall through the cracks. So what we're wanting is more of this service that we've been allowed to do where we can be across, you know, across different areas of need, physical health.
And also holistic approach, because a lot of these clients, sometimes before even getting into mental health, there is basic need which they're lacking. And without that, it will be really difficult. Therefore, having a holistic approach will actually help them to tackle all those issues and getting them actually feel better. And eventually getting them into the job market, which is going to benefit hugely for, huge benefit for Australia. Which we have had quite a few cases in terms of the refugees where I worked personally with a lady who has been very depressed, come from the Middle East, been suicidal and today she's working and paying taxes, she has her own home, she looks after her three children. And I was so impressed that in a matter of twelve months changed from nothing to today. She got a boyfriend, she's very happy every time I talk to her, she got her licence, she got a car and changed completely. And thanks to this kind of holistic approach we use with these clients. And there is not so many people out there who actually do outreach to community and help. And there's a lot of, lot of clients out there who I keep getting causandally, so many people out there who ask for help and support. And we just don't have this, we don't have staff with those skill set who are going to be able to go out there and support these clients. And I believe if we could have like just, you know, pilot of, you know, of services like that, we could have a holistic team starting with, with well trained, upskilled. And then go out in the community and start upskilling and training other teams to actually cover. Like there are some examples of Scandinavian cantay where they have this kind of system. And we know that cantay is like Sweden, it's usually generous with refugees. And they have been very successful in actually getting them into the job market and integrating into society.
I just ask a follow up question, you mentioned a lack of psychologists who are able to support your clients. And I was just hoping to clarify whether that's because of their visa status or because of the nature of their mental health needs or cultural factors that mean that there is a lack of psychologists.
I don't know if there's a lack of psychologists, but there's a lack of psychologists that want to work in this, I think the private practice setting is swallowing them up. But we have found a really good workforce that, especially people that have got, come from migrant backgrounds themselves. Some of them come through and there's a provisional psychology scheme, but some also don't quite meet the English language criteria. And even though they're going to be working, speaking their own community language, they then get stuck on that language thing. So we do get a lot of people that we see lots of potential, but there's some barriers to getting them into that workforce.
Yeah, and adding to my, to Justine's comment, I do agree that it's not, there's not, like, we can't say there isn't lack of, there is a lack of psychologists. But rather a trained psychologist tailored to tackle those kind of problems. Because we know that a lot of refugees and asylum seekers come from parts of the world where trauma is very common and specifically complex trauma. And to have those psychologists who are linguistically, you know, competent and also clinically competent to work with this type of multicultural, diverse background client is quite difficult.
Thank you.
I would, that example you gave of the holistic approach being successful with the client, just interested in how that worked and why it worked. And also what the issues are, if any, between the, the, sometimes I suppose, lack of coordination or response, defined responsibilities between the federal and the state government. So I, I think from my limited experience of having dealt with some of the groups that are catering to the same sorts of cohorts as you, it's, it's, it's sort of a federal government responsibility, but the state kind of has to pick up the pieces. Is, could you just kind of elaborate on?
I think one of the benefits of the, the way we work, because a lot of the services are clinic based, so that's because their contract is clinic based. So this particular client wouldn't meet, wouldn't go to a clinic, a lot of our clients would never, that, you know, either we see them home based or I think one particular client was outside a police station, that's the only place they felt safe to meet us. So being able to meet people in their own space, but a lot of services will have lots of criteria about how they're not allowed to do that. So with that particular client, being able to meet them and then being practically helpful, because people don't put their hand up necessarily for mental health support. They sometimes present with somatic complaints or practical complaints. But along the way, as we're helping them deal with the fact they didn't have car insurance, it's one of the issues that Ben was helping them with. Didn't, you know, language translation problems with documents meant that you're doing a lot of mental health work on the fly. When you're talking to people, calming them down, teaching them distress tolerance on real life situations. And so that when the client's then more stable, because they've got those practical skills and this life starts getting a little bit more ordered, then they're able to actually get into the workforce. But a lot of the sort of more, so, you know, our colleagues do amazing work for those clients that are well enough to go to those services. But it's the clients that aren't well enough to go to the services, because they've got maybe young children or, you know, they don't speak enough English to know. We've had migrants that have been here ten years that still don't know how to use the train system.
And there is also clients who are severely mentally ill and they can't even leave their home. And I do have a refugee family currently of five children, or two of their children, one is seventeen, one is nineteen. And the nineteen years old, it's so sad that he has been locking himself in his room for the past twelve months. Doesn't go out, there have been multiple services involved, including Start and other services. But again, those kind of outreach services are going to go to their home and look what's the need, what sort of doctor this person needs to be referred to, what sort of services they need, that is lacking. Despite the fact that there are multiple organisations involved, none of them, they are like causing these other trying to do the same thing, which is just waste of resources on the other hand. Now, most of them has pulled out, except myself still working with them and actually achieved a bit more than what we would have achieved if everyone else was involved. It goes down always to that outreach services and try to connect with a person and see what's their need and try to tackle that need in terms of holistic approach.
I think as, as we're doing it, we're also trying to upskill the people around us to do some of that work, which is sort of similar to the suicide field, where you make sure everybody knows how to have that conversation, ensure the specialists, but that everybody knows how to have some of those conversations. So we train up a bigger cohort of people.
And what about your experience with the, the federal and state government kind of interplay?
Well, that's a really very, very good point. We, we haven't had really a lot of, personally, a lot of experience in terms of reaching out to the federal, because I work for an NGO who actually has a contact from the federal government and work with settlement, settlement, resettlement of the refugees and also asylum seekers. I such experience personally, I don't have, but I can see the gaps where support is needed.
And I think because that's the federal governments, again, they're, they're paying us to do the settlement work and then another agency to do the mental health work. But then the actual cohesion part of it's missing because they're, again, sort of siloed services that they're funding. And then the state government's left to pick up the, the pieces of those people that just fall through the cracks.
Yeah.
And it's also the coordination, it's so important that, you know, those organisations are getting support or getting resources. There needs to be some coordination between them to actually tackle the problems and try to see what sort of approach we need to utilise here to use to help these clients. And I see that on every days, in my work every day, and I see the challenges that arises. And it's, it's kind of like a lot of work needs to be done.
Just listening to the stories of the siloing and the, the too many cooks, if you like. Is there any benefit, do you think, in exploring a model of funding the person and allowing them to reach out to services? It's almost like here's like a voucher system or something. And so we're funding the person and they attract the services to them rather than the other model. I think that the, the lack of knowledge of the system would mean that they would probably buy services that might not necessarily be in their best interest, that would be the.
Yeah, I have, I have seen that in terms of clients who got children with autism and they have NDIS packets. And I see that also has been really not used in a proper way as well. I think the best option, as I said earlier, is to have a holistic approach and to have people who are actually compassionate and like to work with this type of group or demographic. And upskill them, give them the right training and use them as pilot and then expand upon that, you know.
For a holistic service, what sort of workforce would you need? Would they all be psychologists or would they be? Multi-disciplinary differently.
Yeah, multi-disciplinary, for example, social worker, you've got a caseworker, you've got a nurse, you've got a psychologist. It's like if you have this kind, because now there is this kind of holistic approach, but it's kind of disintegrated. Everyone works in own and they don't achieve a common goal.
Plus the service has to be twenty four seven. So, you know, Ben gets calls all through the weekend and some of those calls are the, the most critical part of your work is when someone's ringing in distress. So a service that says, sorry, ring back Monday morning and then you've got a two week waiting list, clients just won't bother.
But that's an interesting, it's an interesting concept, because you could theoretically have an allocation to the client. But for example, you guys would be then the stewards of that allocation and then you could go to the various services and coordinate.
Like a linker, sort of linker or navigator or something, isn't it? Because that's, I think, what helps in the NDIS world, is someone that sort of understands that service system, but doesn't benefit from the money, so is not interested in the money.
I just want, I just want to add a real and important example, which I would love you to hear today. Is that I work currently with a client who's an asylum seeker, has been here for twelve years. He has severe, extremely severe mental health and drug addiction. And the reason he takes drugs is because to overcome his, his mental health issues. He has been involved recently in an incident and he has been in patients in hospital. I've been involved personally with Cumberland Hospital, Westmead Hospital, as well as the man though with Blacktown Hospital. I spoke to different doctors, I gave them my professional opinion and I said, this client is in no, in no way he should be discharged. He needs some rehab and I stated the point. And the doctor turned to me, he said, I hear you, I agree with you, but I can't keep him here. I said, why? He said, well, I have pressure on me, I can't keep someone more than two, three days, he has to be discharged. And they discharged the client and we went back to square zero. And this is the problem we're facing with quite many clients as well.
We had some similar evidence this morning about the hospital system being used as a kind of a mop up for what are very, need very specialised tailored care, yeah.
Can I ask Chair through you, what services are currently available for people who don't have a Medicare entitlement in particular? And they, and may not meet eligibility for state funded services?
Well, usually currently, our programme, we have a specific programme called SIS programme, which look after asylum seekers. And the clients who don't have Medicare, they will get a document from the programme which allow them to see a G P.
That's only a very small percentage now on SRS, because the government has, you know, reduced the criteria, so it's only very small. So most of the ones are relying on, you know, the asylum seeker resource centre and really just the NGOs and, and big bowler and stealing from different service. Some of them are very bad physical health, because their, their health in the detention facility was poor. And then they've come here and their teeth are rotting and they've got poor eyesight.
So you said the SRS numbers have been, was that as a result of criteria or?
Yeah, so it used to be a wider sort of support service and now it's only for those that we can prove are like extreme needs. Some mums with young, young children, really severe physical and mental health. But they have to keep getting reassessed all the time to stay on that programme and then it's still, the money's less than what you'd get.
Because sometimes we have to go out there to try to develop organisations and actually beg them for some support. Sometimes we get a bit of money for medication, you know, for rent, for food.
Very open to exploitation.
Like we have, we have currently clients who have been doing that for the past twelve months, who have been lucky to get some funding to support, but that's coming to an end and the client is going to end up homeless.
One of our other services is in the domestic and family violence space and some other woman get, you know, it's exploitation because they, you know, some people offer to help them and then that ends up being a disaster then we try to get them in. And there is some funding for, for women with this domestic and family violence.
And we have also LGBT who comes from overseas and knowing that that's not really popular in many parts of the world. And what happens to them, they've been discriminated, they've been mistreated. I have a very good example, where I work currently with a client who has suffered hugely, who was back in Thailand for ten years. And then as soon as they arrive in Australia, happy, say, look, this is cantay of freedom, face also discrimination and harassment in this cantay and lack of resources as well.
And, and do you think as well, in terms of the workforce that is currently available, is there an issue or would it? Would it be of Ben, is there an issue with the workforce not accurately reflecting our client groups? And then what needs to change to actually achieve that?
That's a very good point, thank you for asking this question. I'll tell you briefly, because I have been involved on both sides of the equation. Before I joined the mental health and I was doing my degree, psychology degree, I used to work in a very unique programme within, within SSI called the Ignite Programme. And this programme was specialised in helping asylum and refugees to become entrepreneurs. And I have seen the motivation and dedication of these people when they come here. As soon as they come to Australia, they see Australia as their gateway to independence, to financial independence and so on. And they work very hard, but you have to get them early on before the mental health kicks in. And I have worked with probably five hundred of them, I worked in that, I worked in that programme for five years. And there are some of them currently still operating, having successful business and employing Australians, you know. And I can give you examples, you can Google and find them.
But you were talking about the mental health workforce, were you?
Well, it's a broad link.
Because I was thinking, one of the things I strike, because I have regular clinical students, they're, they're coming straight through from school. But the people with lived experience, they're finding that the fees are so high that puts them off actually then going through the system to be, you know, trained up. And then having HECS debts for quite some years, it puts people off actually getting, the people that we think would be the best, that the amount of money that they need to, to go to uni puts them off.
Right, so this is for people that want to then become qualified. And would they be studying as a, as a domestic student or is it?
It would be a domestic student, even, that's still, still very high that.
It is, yeah.
Because you've got to do your six years and.
Yeah, well, the, the process of becoming a psychologist is quite lengthy and complex. It's not really, and, and I don't believe it's for everyone, it's for people who are compassionate and passionate and really want to work in this space. It's not an easy area to, but, but it is very important also to notify that a lot of the people who come here, you know, whether they are refugees or asylum seekers, they come with the idea of improving their life and they want to work. And I believe that it is very important to get them at early stage and help them despite their mental health, they are very resilient and they can overcome that if they receive help as early as possible. The later, the, the more we delay, the more complex it becomes. And that Australia is losing a lot of productivity here.
Yeah, yeah, okay, great, thank you.
No further questions?
Oh, I have another one if no one else does, but.
No, you go first.
No. No, in terms of, I've just lost it.
Oh, I, I might jump in. Clearly aware of ideas in Scandinavia, other places, is, is there somewhere else in the world that we could look that, that does it better that we can learn from?
Yeah, Germany is doing some, because I lived personally in Scandinavia, that's why I use the example, I used to live in Sweden. And I use that example because I have seen there that I was quite surprised by the fact that they have one of the lowest. At the time when I lived there, they have one of the lowest, you know, crime rate. People don't attend when they go to prison, the actual prison is completely open, people will go there. I did some volunteer work where they, get them a job, they will leave the jail in the morning, go to work and come in the evening. And then by the time they serve their prison sentence, they go out to the community, integrated, they have a job and they have learned from their experience. Again, people who've got mental health issues, they have like addictions, they have very specific venues where they send them. Like there is one outside Stockholm, it's like a country, like a farm. And they have access to everything there, from psychologists, nurses, caseworkers. And then they get them to start, you know, they start getting better, then they get them to start doing some work, learning some skills. By the time they leave the venue, they actually are ready to, to do something and.
There's also in Germany, they've got a model where they're trying to do more the stepwise so that they assess and make sure that the service meets the, the need as people come in. And everybody gets a bit of sort of more of the problem solving, sort of basic stress managementy type stuff. And then it goes through to assessing when there's higher need.
We're, we're more than happy to provide you with some examples later on. If you'd like us to send you some examples, could I read about yourself, I think we're happy to do that.
Sounds like we're going to Sweden, Chair.
Um, oh, sorry.
I thought we had a budget black hole.
I, I've remembered the question that escaped me. As you were talking before, I was sort of thinking about, you've heard a bit today about the role and merits of peer workers and people with lived experience. So as you were talking about, you know, the barriers that exist to, to people going on and, you know, studying. Is, is peer workers, is that currently a, an avenue that is available, is it of merit? What should we do?
I mean, definitely, that's the beauty of a multidisciplinary team. If you had, the, the value, especially when I get students through, students that come from lots of the, the countries that we work with, we learn so much. Having, you know, people that have had lived experience in peer workers able to sort of understand what the need is. So that would be definitely a rich part of any multidisciplinary team. A lot of our caseworkers have come through and have refugee experience, so, you know, they have, they bring that into the, the casework team that we work with.
Absolutely, and it makes also the process quite easy to, to deal with those kind of problems and try to solve them. Rather than having, and we know that there is evidence out there, so, so many research has been done and they found that culturally linguistic. You know, psychologists or social workers, and not many of them out there actually understand how to work. It's not that the cans one don't know, it's that they are not trained or upskilled to deal with this kind of demographic.
Thank you.
Any final questions? No final questions. Thank you so much for the, the time that you've given to us today, as well as your written submission and all of the work that you're doing more broadly. There is an opportunity for questions on notice or for the committee to put further questions and the secretary will contact you in relation to this.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, that was very helpful. And thank you for all your exceptional work.
Thank you so much, thank you, thank you for having us here.
Welcome, thank you all so much for making the time to give evidence today. Could each witness, starting from my left, please give your name and position and then take either the oath or the affirmation?
Zoe Robinson, the New South Wales Advocate for Children and Young People. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now given, about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Kaiser Jing, I'm a lived experience advisor at the Office for Advocate Children and Young People. I solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I'm Ashley De Silva, I'm the CEO at Reach Out Australia. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I'm Ben Bartlett, Director of Government Relations and Communications at Reach Out Australia. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
I have only thirty seconds and then Kaiser will give the opening statement. But I just want to thank the committee for holding such an important inquiry. I want to acknowledge that we're on aboriginal land today and pay my respects to elders past, present and emerging. And also want to acknowledge the five people who contributed in our submissions and shared their own lived experiences with that. But Kaiser will be giving the opening remarks for ACYP.
Good afternoon, chair and committee members, thank you for allowing me to be here today. As I said, my name is Kaiser Jing, twenty one years old. I'm a lived experience, lived experience advisor, advocate for children and young people's office. My lived experience ranges from, I guess, domestic violence, homelessness, I've been involved in legal system and experiencing the justice system from ages fifteen to twenty. Since a younger age, I've been a stranger to the issues, impacts of mental health. Both my parents suffer from severe mental health issues and I've had my own battles with my mental health throughout many periods of my, my life. Today I speak from my own experiences with mental health and I acknowledge that each individual is unique and there is no one size fits all approach when it comes to mental health. So how I overcame my mental health may not work for someone else. My battles with mental health started in primary school, always feeling alone, never been able to concentrate in class, which led to a disconnect and misbehaving at school. Never wanting to be home as a teenager because it reminded me of pain and hardship, which then led to me being involved with the legal and youth justice system. And up until my incarceration at fifteen, I'd never ever had a single bit of support in the community. And then once I entered the youth justice system, I had finally access to professional support. From my experience, I believe there are still many issues with the type of support given to vulnerable and at risk youth. My mental health worsened from the ages of sixteen to eighteen, where I was referred to a psychiatrist by my psychologist within the centre. And I was placed on medication and I remember the first day that I took the medication, I couldn't, I couldn't even get out of bed or think for myself. It made me really tired and I knew that wasn't a solution to my problem. So through my, my sheer determination to change my life and better myself, I went on a journey to educate myself on how to have a more holistic approach to my mental health. Where I could find the tools that worked for me to battle my mental health that ultimately led, that ultimately led me to being able to break the cycle and release back into the community. As I said before, there is no one size fits all approach and I've seen how a traditional approach to mental health issues and medication has helped many young people. But I've also seen the other side of young people who are placed on medication. And they see psychologists and psychiatrists every week, but they still try to attempt suicide, they inflict severe harm on themselves or misbehave as an outlet for their issues. And they're released back into the community with no support again, whether it be they do not know how to ask for help, the lack of access to help. Or the issue of poverty in this country and not being able to afford professional help and many other issues that I hope to get to speak on today, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land that we're on and also those with lived and living experience, as well as the people who love and care for them too. Thanks Kaiser for sharing your story as well. And thank you all for the chance to speak today. Reach Out really welcomes this inquiry, it's very timely and we appreciate the opportunity to speak and also answer your questions today. We're a non-clinical digital mental health service that supports young people to access a range of different types of support. So from one-on-one peer support through to online forums, as well as self-help materials as well. And through our parents and schools programmes, we also provide support to the people that young people very often turn to as well. It's a time, when I say timely inquiry, it's particularly because we know that the statistics around youth mental health at the moment aren't good. Forty percent of young people are recognising that they have a mental health challenge at the moment and suicide's still the leading cause of death for young people in Australia between fourteen and twenty five. It's obviously also been a challenging few years here in New South Wales, as well as elsewhere in Australia. But here particularly with floods, fires, lockdowns, remote learning and the continued impacts of COVID nineteen. Across Australia, more than one million of those young people I mentioned with a mental health difficulty aren't seeking any kind of professional support. And there are many barriers to that and we, we know a lot about this space, but some of the things that we will have mentioned include financial limitations, limited service accessibility or availability. And concerns about confidentiality and stigma are also still high. There's obviously no shortage of challenges in the mental health system, I'm sure you are hearing and discussing those at depth. But we do know that digital services can play a stronger role than they have in the past and that they also overcome many of the barriers that young people typically face. We also think that they can help create a more efficient and effective service overall as well. For those who do seek support, unfortunately navigating the system also brings with it many stories of challenge, in particular for those young people who are in distress. We often hear experiences from young people at Reach Out commenting on being turned away, without pathways to further support. Being kind of seemingly too well for some services but not well enough for others. Being distressed as a result of poor experiences as well. We, we've worked in this space for twenty five years as an organisation and we wish there were easy solutions, but mental health is complex, fragmented. And part of that is the way that it has to span federal and state jurisdictions as well. So whilst there's no one size fits all approach, we, you know, what, what works for young people may not work for adults. And we know that different population groups have different needs as well. But that said, we do hope and think that there's more that can be done to improve it and that co-design is a big part of that. So we, we hope to kind of be able to speak to some of those issues more with you today, but I'll leave it there for now, thanks.
Thank you very much. I might start the discussion off with, with my own question. We had a conversation this morning with a person with lived experience who was talking about the challenges with mental health literacy. That it took them a long time to develop insight into their own symptoms, it took them a long time to develop the language they needed to be able to seek help. And then it took them a long time to understand how to navigate the system to actually access the services that they needed. And so my question is in terms of young people and promoting that kind of mental health literacy, what do we need to be doing? What do you think some of the solutions could be?
Look, in the work that we've done, obviously children and young people speak a lot about peer-to-peer. So being able to relate to and have conversations with people who have a similar understanding or have similar experiences, I think that's really important. Certainly, there is some complexity in understanding all of the elements that you have just raised. And so making things appropriately worded, child-friendly, that sits and reflects the people that we're trying to work with and reach out to, I think is really important. But Kaiser, I don't know whether you have anything in terms of mental health literacy, because you talked obviously in your opening about not having access to things until a certain part. I think we just have to make sure that it is accessible in a variety of places. And I think the assumption is, or the, the thought that it can only come from certain professionals means that it is hard for children and young people to feel comfortable about going to access it, to walk into a certain, whether it's a councillor, a psychologist, even a headspace necessarily. So one, places where they can access it easily, online is something particularly children and young people themselves talk about. Twenty four access, twenty four seven access to that as well, and peer-to-peer support is very important.
Yeah, I'd just add on that, you know, one of the big challenges young people have is even kind of determining whether they're, what they're experiencing is worthy of seeking help. And mental health literacy can play a big part in helping them better understand their experience, potentially validate what they're going through in terms of it being helpworthy. We've seen real success at doing that in kind of almost every stage of care. So from the thing that's got the lowest barriers, it's just high quality information written in language that resonates, it's not medical. It really does kind of frame the experience in the way that a lot of young people experience it. So sometimes it might not be through an anxiety lens, it could be through the stress of study. Or it could be through feeling like I can't, I'm lonely or I'm finding it hard to find friends. Very often the kind of starting point for young people is not that medical lens. And then thinking about, like Zoe touched on, the step-ups from there in terms of the conversation types that feel less threatening and that feel more relatable to young people. And that's where things like online forums, where you can ask any question that's on your mind in a safe space, know you're going to hear back from people who know what they're talking about and, and be, be supported in that way. Or speaking to people who feel like they've walked a day in your shoes, which is kind of the peer support model. And one that we've, we launched a year ago, a text-based model of that, which again is around taking out the need for needing to even vocalise to someone that you don't know. So all of those things can play a really, really big parts in helping people kind of latch on to, actually there's more here for me. And maybe I can think about better understanding it and knowing what my next steps might look like.
And in the young people themselves talk about providing training to frontline workers around, you know, relating to young people, the language that young people themselves use. And certainly, the young people who provided their own stories in submission talked about the importance of being able to, and that is young people in their spaces broadly always wanting to ensure that everyone is supported in community. They're very thoughtful in their approach to things, so it's not about saying, pointing fingers at anyone for not doing something. It's saying, let's work with frontline workers and others to ensure that they are also informed in the language. And the kinds of ways that children and young people want to have conversations about this. But that point about not recognising or necessarily knowing, it's that, it is that we've seen in our surveys that children and young people are talking about cost of living and that's being a pressure for them. And we know that the links between that kind of pressure may lead to things, but it's not necessarily that they're walking in knowing exactly what it is. It's just that there are feelings and understandings of what's going on, so being able to work through that with children and young people in appropriate language in appropriate ways is important.
Thanks so much to you all for appearing today. I'm going to ask you a question around school councillors. I know in the youth advocates submission, they are, they are referenced, but I'm particularly keen to hear your thoughts on their role, their effectiveness. And, you know, in, in particular Kaiser, if you're comfortable sharing whether, you know, such a, such a model would have been useful or is useful, yeah?
I remember when I was at high school, I didn't even really, I didn't know that school councillor existed, to be completely honest. Even I remember going into a high school when we were doing our vaping, our work around vaping, we spoke about school councillors, they said, they, they didn't even know who they were, so. Your school councillor, you don't really see them often and it's, it's one of those things, like can you really relate to that person as well? So that's, that's sort of the, the issue that I've always had with, with sort of professionals and seeking professional help. It's, so you, maybe competence isn't the right word, but you're relying on that person to truly understand where you come from and to be able to have an open discussion, like again with someone you don't completely trust, so.
And I think that's an important piece that you touch on there. It is not a reflection on the fact that we know that there are incredible councillors who are doing amazing work in a lot of spaces. The flip side is, we always have to understand that it is often really hard in many circumstances to take that step through someone's door. Now, we've heard in a number of scenarios where we've done various other consultations where you have to come out of class, you have to walk down a corridor, you have to go to a certain door. So in terms of discretion, that confidentiality piece, you know, there is even the physical process of going to a councillor requires you to almost make it very clear that's what you're doing. We've also heard from children and young people that it is not always clear to them necessarily whether that councillor is there for them. Or whether they would have a, anything that is disclosed needs to go back to a parent. And that's not necessarily saying that, we acknowledge there are scenarios in that, but there is this, are you here for me as a student and the things that I'm going through? Or is this, you're going to go to the principal or the teacher or to other people to have that conversation? So one of those things is about consistently working with and understanding what children and young people, where they will engage. Because we also know that they, they will want to take matters into their own hands and have conversations and seek help and all of that. But it's about designing systems as my colleagues have done here that reflect chat functionality or twenty four seven. And I'm certain you would have heard today, it doesn't always happen within school hours, so how are you dealing with those things outside of school hours? So to acknowledge the incredible work that's done, we also hear that, for example, children and young people, simple things like not wearing the school T-shirt, but wearing a T-shirt that says, we're Reach Out. But wearing a T-shirt that says, we reach out or so it feels like you're separate from the school and you're someone that we can speak to. Um, but then also, how do you manage the actual process of going to a school counselor and what that looks like?
Can I ask a follow-up? So to what degree is that a function of specific parameters put around what counselors can and can't do? And or a function of lack of adequate qualification and training? Excuse my interest in my ignorance. I'm just not aware of what a school counselor's required to undergo in terms of professional training before they do that. So there's kind of two, sorry about the two questions, but that's kind of, yeah.
I could see my colleague leaning in, so you might want to respond to. I I mean, I can't, I, it would be inappropriate for me to have a genuine understanding of the parameters. In terms of a psychologist counselor relationship, I'm not an expert in that. Uh, what I would say as an example is in a report that is yet to be released, um, which is the vaping report that Kaiser's talking about. One of the recommendations around that is perhaps a piece around both understanding from counselors, but also for students. What are those parameters and what are the boundaries in terms of, um, you know, how is it that you can work? Like in all scenarios, work with the person who sits in front of you, your patient, the person you're caring for, um, so that they can progress through things. But also what are your duties of care in other places? But how are we actually explaining that between people?
Yes, I was just interested, Kiss, from Kaiser's response because I I imagine in an ideal world, you would just want total autonomy. Where the counselor has a professional qualification and he's able to act autonomously to what they think needs to be given in terms of care. And whether or not there's restrictions around when they have to escalate things because oh, that's a red flag. You've got to tell the principal or the parents. So I was just interested in that kind of.
I could add a perspective on it. I mean, Reach Out as well, we weren't, we promote being an anonymous service, but there's boundaries obviously even to that. So we are always really transparent with the limitations of where we would need to breach confidentiality to keep someone safe.
Yeah.
Um, and so we, for us, that would usually be around escalating to emergency services using an IP address if there's risk of suicide. That's the most um, pointy end of where we would have to breach that confidence. You obviously work really closely with a young person to try to keep them in control and and encourage them to make disclosures that that will keep them safe. But in those events, there are ways of doing that that I think are really transparent and would be common practice. So possibly, you know, less, I I think the the reality around counselors that we hear is very similar to um, what Zoe shared. Which is kind of more that that idea of, I know you're there, if if they know they're there, I know you're there. But um, going to you in this environment is just not what I think I need right now. And you know, we've heard, I remember the story it says with Mia, we do a lot of qualitative research and conversations with young people. And we were looking at the kind of barriers to different access like this. And she shared a story about her teacher who'd kind of said, look, I know year twelve is a stressful time. If anyone needs more time after class, you know, come, come and have a chat with me. And her initial thought is, great, now I can't come and speak to you. Because you've just made it clear that if I do, I'm signaling to the rest of my team, my my class, that I've got a problem and that's not something that I want to do. So it's a really fine line in terms of getting that young people to feel comfortable. Um, and and the realities of doing that in a school environment can be limiting in terms of the school counselor perspective.
Can I ask whether or not, um, cause it sounds like, you know, having a school counselor sitting in a room is probably less effective. Than having someone on the other end of a chat function that can then answer to people wherever they are. Um, at at whatever time they need. Is that the case?
I would say you kind of want both. Like this is the thing, young people, you know, like any of us, like we we're always looked to create options for young people. So we might and Reach Out kind of say, we recommend you have a chat to a peer worker. But if you, but you could also read this article, you could also contact this other place. And I think we kind of want it to be that um, flexible for people. So if there's someone who's comfortable going and seeing someone and they want to be in the room with them and eyeball them and be in that space, great. But we know that there's a lot of young people who wouldn't. So I think the kind of idea of what you just described there goes to a lot of the the young people who wouldn't have that preference. And when I in my opening statement, references more than one million people in Australia with a mental health challenge, not seeking professional help. These are some of the reasons why.
And I think also, uh, this is on the assumption that you are attending school. So you you know, the balance is if you are attending school and you feel comfortable that you want to go have a conversation with someone and your school counselor is available. What an incredible avenue to have. One of our um, people who provided their story in our submission talked about the fact that they didn't have a good experience with the counselor. But that they were referred to headspace. And so as a result, they got some help that they um, uh, needed. So that is why I think it is, and as Kaiser said in his opening statement, is it's a holistic approach. So our view would be, based on what we've heard from children and young people, the more options you have that have been informed by and designed by children and young people. The better outcomes you will have for children and young people.
So Kaiser, when you know that experience you relayed in Europe, was there a touch point with external services? Like counseling or or the he, or the health professionals where it helped you to turn the corner? Or was it largely under your own steam or a combination of both? Just in interested to hear.
Um, so like I said, the only time I had, I sought professional help or it's sort of, you don't have to say it's sort of there. It's you, you have to do it within custody. You have to see a psychologist. Um, you don't really have a choice.
Yeah.
Or you do, but if you don't, you sort of get sort of in trouble for it. But um, the thing with me with professional help is, and this is me saying this is not undermining the work that psychologists do, understand they're a very important part. But a prof, uh, a qualification is a qualification. Sure, my psychologists might understand the science behind of how my trauma has affected me growing up and why I behave a certain way. But do they truly understand what I've been through? That that was always, maybe that's a bit of arrogance of when I was a bit younger. And that sort of thinking that no one understands what I've been through. But that's, that's the sort of issue that I personally had with psychologists. And you could sort of tell sometimes when you, when you, when you speak to psychologists, they sort of shut you off sometimes when you talk about certain things. And it wasn't, wasn't denying your experience, but I don't think sometimes they truly, truly understand. So that's where I was, I sort of went on my own two feet and I found like a more holistic approach where I could sort of help myself from really being on on self-help.
But i- in your situation, you've obviously had some sort of inner strength to pull yourself out, right?
Yeah.
So what about for people who can't do that? And and you're saying the psychologist might not be the solution. Then who who do they talk to?
So a a big, I'd say a big pivotal point for me as well was, at the time I was in custody. An external organization had come in and it was made up of lived experience, youth mentors. And they'd all served um, jail time and they've all done custody.
Yes.
So that was a big thing for me where I'd seen these people who have come from what I come from, have gone through the same things and they've changed their life. Now they're doing not-for-profit work, they're youth mentors. And that's what really sort of kick-started the the sort of fire in my belly to come and do this kind of work. Cause I seen the impact that it had on myself.
That they'd been through it comes with a lot of credibility and then allows you to get, okay.
Yeah.
And perhaps, uh, so Kaiser has worked at our organization for over a year now. And this year, we also witnessed a, another young person who exited, who wanted to come work with us. And um, very different to Kaiser. Um, but one of the things that I thought it was important for this committee to hear is we often think about these settings in terms of a hospital setting that you've come or exited from. Or that there's an acute response. This is an example of someone who's gone through a different government setting. Um, and has also exited without necessarily connections into counseling services on exit. And Kaiser has worked really hard for a year. Unfortunately, the other young person who exited, we thought should have had connections into that, like a psychologist, like support. But didn't receive that and is now back in adult custody. So I I think it's a really, you know, we think of it often in terms of a school setting or a hospital setting and how we continue to have through care for people. I think it was a really interesting learning for me, seeing that we've exited people from places where we've known when they're coming out. And there is no necessarily community support that's automatically set up in that scenario unless someone takes it upon themselves to go find. And you can imagine what that's like if you've been somewhere for five years and then you've been asked to go walk into a psychologist's office.
Yeah.
Hmm. So, sure.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for coming on today. Uh, thank you for the submissions. They're very helpful. Um, we've been, we've received any submissions as you know, and there'll be further hearing days and uh, and we've had evidence today. Sort of challenged myself to try and work out how we're going to deal as a committee making a report with recommendations, which will um, hopefully be helpful to to government. But what we're sort of coming up against is uh, just the sheer size of the the problem, if we could sort of use that phrase. It's, it's manifest, it's everywhere. Um, you know, it's long, deep, wide, however you like to define it. So there's a big call on the need to really improve matters re-mental health in the community across the whole population. Uh, and I don't think there's any real disagreement about that. But as we addressed looking at that, there are many uh, submissions uh, and arguments put that. We also need to, in terms of addressing this at a complete level, a global level, that there are a whole lot of groups within or or parts within. Which are deserved of and 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 necessarily need quite specific attention. So there's this sort of tension of dealing with like the global issue, which we know is large. And can we at the same time deal with that, also deal with these individuals? Not dismissing the significance of this, but I'm just looking at this from the point of view of of affordability, to be perfectly frank. I mean, where will the money come to be able to deal with the global matter? But also at the level of specificity which is being asked for by the individual group. So sort of just welcome some comments on our observations about what's possible. Because we could talk up what we'd like, as much as we like, but realistically speaking, what 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 should we be doing?
Um, I'm happy to uh, jump in. I think there are things that are at a system level, uh, can make a huge difference. Like improving service interoperability and sort of system navigation, helping people find the support that's right for them. That at a system level will make a huge difference across um, the population generally. But I think um, there are, we see specific needs from uh, key uh, priority population groups. Who often have worse mental health outcomes than the uh, general population as a whole. And uh, some different barriers to accessing services, particularly um, around uh, language. Or seeing themselves and their culture represented in a service and sort of feeling that that service is safe for them. Um, so there's a real mix of, I think there are things that can be done at a might, a sort of more micro-service level. To address the uh, priority population groups as well as the broader system design things. But I think in terms of cost, like obviously the demand on the system is enormous. Uh, the federal and state government funding uh, is very significant. But there's still a huge uh, surplus of demand. But I think it's important to keep in mind that the economic studies have all shown and the Productivity Commission report from a few years ago was very clear. That the benefits of actually investing in mental health over the long term will save a significant amount of money. Uh, over the long term, even if there is a high cost at at the beginning. And at Reach Out, I think we've consistently argued for uh, greater investment in prevention and early intervention. To help uh, address issues when perhaps they're easier to head off before they sort of spiral or develop over several years. And become sort of the critical uh, types of issues that um, have the biggest impact on people and their ability to sort of. Uh, contribute to society in sort of different ways.
And Mr. Donnelly, I've appeared for you many a times, so you'd know I quite like an ideal world where we can meet the needs of every person and individual. And I think we should still aim for it. But I think there are systemic things. And I actually think the intervention side of things is incredibly important. So from us, when we're talking about children and young people, you know, the two-point-five million children and young people here in New South Wales who are incredibly diverse.
Yeah.
But they are talking about similar things, school stress. So perhaps it is about, less about thinking about what a service looks like. Cause I, 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 we have designed services, we've included children, young people in that design, they've made it very clear what that looks like. And actually looking at those thematic things that people are sharing. And so um, and I, and we would absolutely agree with that early and prevention. And I think sometimes there is a lot of focus, as you asked in the first instance, around language and how we actually um, speak about this. When it's quite clear, children and young people are talking about school stress. So how are we having conversations about that and helping them early, set themselves up for success? So school stress doesn't become something this generation is facing. So I think less about the groups as such, and I think more about the themes. And then also the structure of how we're making it accessible for people to get the help that they need. And that's why it's so important to have programs that are twenty-four seven, that are chat functions, that are approachable, that are language, um, you know, have language inbuilt. Um, and translation and are culturally appropriate as well.
And just finally, the question of speaking safe, I mean, I've got limited experience in this area. I'm trained in it all, have worked in it, um, but have knowledge of people who have any fault in mental health matters. Um, it struck me as a bit surprising, I have to say, maybe I'm just naive, that through a number of the submissions and and some of the evidence. The um, the statement made or the implications of the statement made is that it's not safe to access what's there. In other words, what's out there is there, however, good, bad or indifferent it is at the moment. But there is mental health services out there. But the number of submitters that have said, I mean, uh, the previous uh, um, uh, earlier today, a very explicitly point made. That it's not safe. They don't consider what is, dare I say, the mainstream, what's generally available and can be found pretty easily. Mental health services are not safe. A striking statement, I thought anyway, that there are individuals who obviously just find it unsafe to contemplate. Going to access what's already out there. I just welcome that. I mean, I don't know whether I'm misunderstanding the actual meaning of safe or it really is worse than I actually thought it was.
I certainly know our submissions, the young people spoke about the stigma still that they feel that's involved. Um, so I I.
But that's different from.
Correct, absolutely. But I think um, that is still part of the experience of feeling comfortable, perhaps word safe. To go to a place and approach that if you are dealing with um, um, complexity already. And you don't feel necessarily like it's going to be easy for you to have that conversation with someone. Then that can absolutely make it difficult for you to take that first step. And some people might describe that as feeling unsafe.
I guess what I'm saying, I'm a bit concerned the idea of, not themselves, but the sense of pathologizing a situation. I mean, things can be uncomfortable talking about difficult things. In fact, it might be very, very difficult to do so. But the then to sort of, to to impugn that dealing with it, um, you know, is unsafe. It just seems a bit of a leap for me, but as I said, maybe I'm misunderstanding it.
I think uh, the sort of term safety has a slightly different sort of meaning in that context. It's less about a service being medically safe or effective and more about that sort of safety to access uh, for that person.
And what does that mean?
Uh, it's, I guess, sort of around that sort of comfort and feeling like that this is a service where you'll be understood. Uh, and they'll get the issues that you're going through rather than it potentially being effective or not.
Which brings you back to the point that this is, this is where I think there's a tension anyway, that, I mean, I'm just saying this to consider. That that if there is this, dare I say, overarching view that the best way, that the best practice way is to be able to deal with these uh, issues in a segmented way. To deal with the specifics of the different groups, whoever they might be. That's got to be dealt with. And then there's the overarching provision of mental health services. And I'm just wondering how, how that's all afforded in it, in the real world, that's all.
I think it goes to breadth and depth. So you know, you've kind of heard um, people talk about the breadth of issues. Look for the familiarity of issues that will be helpful to kind of cover for large numbers of people. But also, this is really then on services as well to develop the capability to go narrow and to become, and to signal to people. So Reach Out, you know, to use an example from our experience, we're a mainstream service. But we know that the proportion of First Nations people accessing Reach Out doesn't reflect the need in that community. We'll, so for us, it was a very thoughtful approach to how do we develop materials that Aboriginal people would feel are culturally safe. So are reflecting their particular perspective, need and experience, even though we are a mainstream service. And so for us, that does end up manifesting as who's on your workforce, how are you making decisions? How are you translating something like studies stress into language and issues that resonate in the community? Um, and doing that then in partnership with community is how we've done that. So it's, but you're right, there's a limit to how many areas organizations can go narrow on. Cause there's usually, there is an adaptation involved to be able to better meet those needs.
Would this be where, um, say, uh, digital, um, digital services might be useful in terms of mental health reform more broadly?
I think it is because, yeah, like a good example is, you know, we've had a lot of information around different ways of um, helping people across a range of issues. But when we did that translation with First Nations people, it kind of comes through in language like how to yarn about a difficult problem. Or how to um, connect to your culture through dance, for instance. Things that are gonna help a First Nations young person that might not resonate with someone who's non-Indigenous. But that are actually, once we've got the the structures in space in place as an organization to create and deliver those, it's possible and and not too complicated.
Perhaps in terms of mental health literacy. Perhaps in terms of mental health literacy, so in your question, we seem to be thinking about those who are in a situation where they need to get help, or people who provide that help. We're still going to have a conversation with the greater population who may not be in those situations, about the language we use and the spaces that we provide. And so knowing work that you have seen us do, we have heard from a number of people that if they turn up to a space to seek a help, there are people there who know why they are there and make them feel unsafe and uncomfortable. So I think there is also a very real conversation when talking about investment in health and health literacy, is if you are not a person who is seeking that, what are also the things we need to work with mums and dads and teachers and frontline workers and everyone to say the language we use, the interactions we have need to look better? So to not speak for you, but when you talk about sitting in front of a psychologist when you're in custody, and they shut down when it's a difficult conversation or it's something that they don't understand, how do you approach that differently? That is still really important to be able to say, I might not, may not be able to understand it, I may not have experienced it, but I want you to still feel comfortable and confident to be here. So we need to also think about the greater population and working with everyone to understand what good health and good health conversations are like as well.
Can I just build on to that point, because I think it's a really important one that I haven't made yet either, is that we often, a lot of the research comes from people who have sought help, but again, I think I heard in what you were saying, Zoe, and Reach Out does a lot of this work, we focus a lot on understanding the perspectives of people who have a mental health challenge but are not seeking help. And so sometimes in conversations like this, for good reason, we want to hear how the system's not working, but you can end up just refining parts of that system, rather than thinking about the people who haven't even engaged in it yet.
Very close question. One of our terms of reference, as you would have seen, is the risks and benefits of telehealth services, and we've received a lot of evidence about people wanting to be able to access support and care on their terms, sort of at all hours of the day, whether that's online services. I'm particularly asking this question because Reach Out is here and you've got quite an innovative model. So I suppose, in what ways does that work really well? What are your limitations and perhaps how have you overcome some of those things? You know, I'm particularly interested if, for example, a young person in one of your online forums discloses something like childhood sexual abuse or signs of psychosis, how you're able to manage that?
Yeah. I mean firstly, the benefits, you kind of have said it, it's because that's what people are asking for, right? So digital does lend itself very well to creating what it is that young people or others are looking for. I think it goes to all of the things around access, it has a whole lot of things in there around anonymity, if that's a preference for people. Again, we design that way, but there are online models where that's not the case as well, so it's, there are many different ways of doing it. I think on the safety side, you know, Australia is just going through the process of introducing a new accreditation system for digital mental health services, which is a fantastic thing because there hasn't been one. That's a federal initiative, and so services like Reach Out are going through an accreditation process at the moment, we're at the tail end of that, which really systematically looks at the kinds of expectations we should have of services, so that we know, even though they're digital, they're underpinned by evidence, they've got the right safety protocols, et cetera. So that's probably been a missing piece. But then in practice, what that means is the kind of scenarios that you're referring to, organisations like Reach Out are set up well to deal with. So we have mandatory reporting obligations, it goes to how do you escalate for different types of issues? How do you, so, you know, we have a whole range of systems in place, like clinical advisory groups, debriefing for our staff, so it kind of, you kind of look at it from the consumer's perspective, but also the staff's perspective, who are providing support. So I can speak specifically around something if you're interested there, but I guess I'm saying more broadly, you do have to have and should have all of those kinds of systems in place that mean that you're doing, you're upholding the standards of safety that you'd expect. There are particular things and boundaries that, like, so for instance, being an anonymous service, to build out, I suppose, on your question around the forums, people only, we keep barriers to entry low, but we only, we take enough information that in any kind of risk situation, we can then act in the way that's appropriate. So in an online forum, it's a pseudonym, someone can just provide, but we've got an email address, an IP address or a phone number, which we can use when we have to escalate. So for us, there is some additional risk that comes into managing an environment like that. For instance, the forums aren't real time, so our replies, it's not like a live text chat. So we have to have different systems in place that help us assess when do we need to act based on how much time's passed between hearing back from someone. So for example, if they're in a high-risk situation where suicide risk is likely, the team knows the protocol's in place around that, so we're not going to leave at 24 hours if we haven't heard from someone. So you have to kind of modify and use clinical judgment to make sure that you've adapted well enough, but still are keeping people safe.
And there are, so aside from organisations like Reach Out and other services, there is a very good example, which we have done a lot of work around, and in fact, our staff have the benefit of, and our youth advisory have the benefit of, which is Sonda, which is being set up by people who are ex-military, and there are first responders who are part of that group, and every person who is on-boarded into Sonda, and there are very big organisations that participate in this now, Woolworths and Commonwealth Bank, and there are small organisations, there's a DV service that's on it, youth of the streets have partnered with them as well. And the person on the other end of that sign is a trained nurse, and has a mental, sorry, has a health background, and if it does escalate, it can go up to the person who is kind of the head psychiatrist or head psychologist that's there at the time, and that is all online, but it also has enabled things. So for example, one of the stories that we heard when we first started to work with them was a young person who was going through self-harm and had engaged on the chat, and whilst that was happening, and with the way it had been sent up, and with consent and everything like that, whilst that was happening, the service was able to engage with a caseworker and send an ambulance out at the same time. And so there are some really sophisticated platforms that do exist, that have been designed by users and have very good medical practitioners behind it as well. And we have certainly seen the stories of success in that, and it can be not that acute end, it can be you are dealing with, you are a single mum and you are dealing with a young baby, and you are having a real panic about what to do, and they will work through that with you as well and engage with you, and if you need to go to hospital, they will ensure that someone is collecting you and supporting you through that. So there are some very sophisticated services that have been designed in a different way, but we've certainly seen them be successful for children and young people as well.
Thank you.
If you want to ask a question?
Thanks.
Changing gears a little bit, and going back, I think, to that idea of early intervention, especially for young people who may not really have the language or the awareness to know that the way they feel is different to the way that they should be feeling, and thinking about what we've heard in relation to school councillors, and that they are sort of other and difficult to access. I'm just wondering about the utility of peer support workers in, I don't know, sports settings, youth group settings, that type of, and, you know, I wonder, Kaiser, whether you have any views, whether if you'd have encountered somebody like that at about 13 that you were kicking a soccer ball around with and was able to have conversations with you? Or do you think that sometimes people need to reach a crunch point in their life and then a decision point and an access point?
I think 13 would have been a bit too, still too late for me. I think, and I speak for other young people and children that come from similar experiences of mine, I really needed that early intervention from a young age. Most of my issues that I didn't have control over stemmed from probably about zero to five. So involve, like, obviously, police comes to the house in terms of DV, family court, supervision, like orders with my father and a whole range of other things, and it's remarkable how I didn't have to see one professional, and I'd never seen one professional. So I really think early intervention is very key from a young age, especially when there's a lot of trauma in a household. So I think by the time I was 13, it was sort of something needed to happen drastically in my life, and that's where custody, and I still to this day say it was a blessing for me, because it gave me professional support, that gave me time to be in an environment where there was no negative influence in my life, and I could really work on myself. So I'm really big on early intervention, and maybe if I seen a psychologist at the age of three or four or five, would have helped me a lot more than 14, 15.
But I guess at that young age, you would have needed an adult to facilitate that in your life?
That's the issue, right? Yeah, so my parents both had significant issues and severe mental health issues, so how do they, when they need help themselves, how are they going to get their child help? So I just don't know how, like, when, for example, if police comes to the house for DV, how can they not, you know what I mean? It's sort of like, how can they sort of get the child help, or how can, it was docs at the time, how could docs get me help, or an alfa, so?
And we've certainly heard in terms of other programmes, like sports programmes, and again, if I think about, when you're talking about what is possible, it's because if you are coming to sport regularly and you are there and people see you and you have, and then suddenly you're not coming, or your footy boots are starting to look a bit ratty, you know, there are these ways that you can see what might be happening with someone. And so again, that's about how do we work with educating all people who are seeing children and young people in a variety of spaces to not just identify and jump to a particular conclusion, but actually how are you going, the kind of language? And so we've certainly seen really good programmes, the NRL run a number of programmes, including responses to when things have happened, like responses to when bushfires have happened in the community, and they send out players. And again, I think it's that listening to the fact that children and young people want to hear from people like them, or people that they respect, or people that they know for various reasons, and how does that work together to say, whilst we're in this space, we're also going to just make sure that you're okay, and we might have a different conversation with you as well. But if you just want to throw a footy, great, if you just want to do some amazing art with us, amazing. But again, it's about saying, not everyone's going to be playing footy, so what do we make sure that it's, where are we meeting children where they are, children and young people where they are, and how are we facilitating conversations, even if it's just a sit-down, have a meal, how you going, what's going on, and it might be as simple as that sometimes. But again, equipping everyone, frontline workers, people who are working with children and young people, to be able to have those conversations and then potentially recognise what might be needed.
And that should be primary school as well as high school, by the sound of things.
Well, we've heard zero to five, so, early.
Can I just put on record how much I respect you, Kaiser, for what you've done in your life? And I, well, you, I know you're proud of yourself, and I just want to put on record how much I respect you.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thanks so much.
Are there further questions from the committee?
Yeah, I do. It's a bit sensitive, but I want to sort of approach the issue because I think it just needs to be, I think, discussed, appreciate your opinions. So with the ACPYP's report, the voices of LGBTQI+ young people in New South Wales 2022, the issue of gender-affirming care, and specifically gender-affirming surgery. The commissioner would know this is on page 120. As you say, trans and gender-diverse young people also shared their frustration about gender-affirming surgeries not being available to people under the age of 18 in New South Wales. And then on the next page, it goes on about concerns about not being able to get certain advice about binding, which we all understand what that is. But I'm just wondering, though, on matters of such significance like, you know, the surgery that's being considered, both the males and females, but there is a real preponderance these days, and the numbers bear this out, it's significantly more a matter for young women than young men. Is not there a great deal of care needs to be taken before we say that the affirmation approach is the one that we simply endorse as the way to deal with this matter of surgery? Because it just strikes me that, as it's, it's obviously stating the obvious, that it's irreversible, that's it. They're sterilised for life, and they're on hormones to the end of their life, that's the effect of the surgery, that's the actual medical reality. I know that's putting it bluntly, but is it not really a matter of great care that we need to take in dealing with these desires of young people who are, and they're less than 18 years of age, so except with 18 as adult, but wanting to push ahead with treatment, which is pretty significant and life-changing?
I'll just note that that question is well outside of the scope of the terms of reference of this inquiry. If witnesses would like to answer it, I'll allow them, but they may choose not to answer that question, given it's well outside the scope.
Well, no, no, well, I take point of order, it's not outside the scope at all, it's part of specifically the terms of reference. Where we've got it? Terms of reference, Andy? So the terms of reference specifically, H, accessibility and cultural safety of mental health services for First Nations people, culturally and racially diverse, cold, LGBTQI+ people, young people and people with disability. And we know that the matter of what I've raised is done and dealt with and considered in the context of mental health discussions that take place with children and young people.
Yep. The terms of reference are about the accessibility of the mental health service?
Yes.
Not about what may or may not need to be done in services that are offering gender-affirming care?
No, this is my, no, 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 this is my very point, that the mental health services that are provided to the young people, to the children and young people, to discern over this decision, that isn't it really important that that's got very light because of the consequences?
I agree that I would have suggested it was outside the terms of reference, however, I would never expect that I would appear before you without you asking a question like this. And what I would say to you, as I've said a number of times about this, is you've used the word care, and that is an incredibly important thing to think of when you're talking about these particular...
No, no, hang on, that's the language.
Mr. Donnelly, could you please allow the witness to answer the question that you've asked?
Well, just so words are not put in my mouth, but care is what's used by others, yeah.
So, as I was going to say, it is incredibly important when we are talking about a particular cohort that has incredible vulnerability, and that has been spoken about a lot in this place, that we approach this topic with incredible care and incredible understanding, and I would say, perhaps a word that we need to say more, love and kindness about what is happening. And that is a very personal, that is a family conversation, that is an individual's conversation. And so the part that you were talking about, which is so far down the track for someone's journey and their experience, is one end. When we are having a conversation about this, it is important to think about all of the care that should be given by all of the people that are in this person, and that word care comes from a place of understanding and kindness and working with a family and working with an individual to ensure that they are safe, that they are heard, and that they have the opportunity to not necessarily be talked about so consistently in a place that is, you're talking about one particular end. Let's start at the beginning, which is, let's have conversations, let's create space for all children and young people to feel safe, to have an opportunity to be heard, and then we work with families, we work with the individuals, we provide them support, we provide them access, and that's the conversation that we should be having.
Really, what's your answer, but anyway, would you offer a response?
It's not their report, you can feel free to go out of your box.
I think I will decline to answer that, but note that nobody rushes into accessing that sort of care lightly.
Are there any other questions from members of the committee? All right, with the seven minutes we've got remaining, I might just invite our witnesses, if there's anything that you would have liked to have the opportunity to address that you haven't been asked about.
Sorry, if I could ask another question. Are there places that do it better than we do? Are there places that we should look at? Should we go to Sweden, should we go to Germany? Are there other jurisdictions that, from which we can learn?
I would suggest there are a lot of incredible leading practices here in our own state, which is, you're sitting with colleagues of mine who have done incredible work, and there are really amazing places here. For us, it all starts by actually having conversations with the people you serve. So in our space, talk to children and young people, they are experts in their own lives, so you can do that here. However, if you are taking a trip overseas and you need experts to attend with you to Sweden, then I'm sure we can make ourselves available.
We're all on the...
You're very kind.
I'd agree, I think we've got a lot of the pieces in place, but it's the challenge of putting them together in ways that start to address a lot of the things that other reports and inquiries point to. In terms of digital, just, you know, that's an area of speciality for Reach Out, I think there is, there are some interesting parts of the world, you know, again, a lot of them who also refer back to Australia, but just to answer your question, interestingly, New Zealand's done quite well with digital, and you kind of see that reflected in the proportion of investment in digital mental health services and design. And you kind of see that reflected in the proportion of investment in digital mental health services and design, as well as places like Canada as well. So.
Are they app-based or?
It's a mix. Yeah, there's definitely always apps within, you know, what we refer to as digital, but also services that look similar but also different to ours. Yeah.
Chair, I've got one final question with your indulgence, just in terms of the youth advocate. Have you been hearing, what have you been hearing more generally regarding the Youth Advisory Council regarding mental health? And is there any area in the state in particular that needs or that has more need or we could do more in or, yeah?
So you would have seen from the submission, the inclusion of regional children and young people and also obviously in the metro. And so those who shared their story, who were all on our Youth Advisory Council, did talk about some of the disparity between the regional experiences. And again, there have been some incredible works being done in terms of investment in that. But some of that, when you're talking about technology, relies on all of the things to be lining up, access to internet, all of that as well. And also wait times, we've certainly heard in regional areas, there can be longer wait times to get access to things like Headspace and a physical face-to-face. I would say that from the Youth Advisory Council's own perspective, they've talked about, you know, the difference between also the schools, public, private, independent and all of that as well and what kind of supports might be coming into those schools as well. And then obviously, yeah, the community or in if it's regional and if there's a place to go to, if it's easy to get to. So again, when you're thinking about the whole issue and the systemic, there is still, you have to be able to, if it's a place you have to go face-to-face, you have to be able to get there and you have to be able to do it at a certain time. So we have heard the differences between regional and metro.
And just with the couple of minutes we've got left, I know you did mention the Safe Havens in your submission. And we have heard a bit about them today. Just any observations on how well or otherwise they're working for young people in particular?
Noting we haven't done a specific piece of work on that, but we are incredibly supportive of Safe Havens, as we've said that, because it provides a place for people to go and access to a variety of services that they might not always get. That is something that, subject to other things that we're doing right now, what we always like to do is go back to the children, young people themselves and test out and say, how has it worked for you? So that could be a piece of work that we could undertake for the benefit of this inquiry if that was useful.
Yeah, that's probably an area we know less about as well. So I think, you know, that would be something we'd be interested in too in kind of learning a little bit more around how those spaces work. But I can instantly kind of understand from an access perspective, there'd be a benefit there.
We heard in particular that people still weren't aware that they existed, that promoting them in some way needed to be done. Have you got suggestions about how we could do that particularly for youth or some of these other priority groups?
I mean, yeah, we work a lot in kind of the connecting with young people and framing mental health, you know, topics and ways again to kind of lower those, to increase access. It's tricky because again, it kind of, it comes down to particularly how these places are framed. Because if they're too, if they feel too much like a mental health service, you're going to lose that group of people I've referred to a few times today, who just won't identify. But again, if the issue is around awareness, then I think, you know, looking at local areas and using digital channels is also like digital marketing channels, making sure you're in the places that young people are. There can be a tendency to kind of, these things to land a little bit too government-y, honestly. Like and feel too much like a service where a lot of young people will just go, oh, that's not really for me. So I think it's, as much as we've talked about language and framing, those things are really important when you're trying to reach young people.
And children and young people who have always spoken, often speak to us about spaces when we're having a variety of conversations, be it about access to health, but also activities and things like that. They talk about wanting spaces. The key thing is making that space feel like something that children and young people would go to. We went to, Kaiser and I went on the road recently and there's a beautiful place in the middle of a suburb and there was not a single child or young person. So we literally got in the car and drove around and saw people. And we said, do you know about this space? And they said, we don't. And it was right, it was 20 metres from where they were. And so part of it is probably the look and feel of it, but also what are you doing in that space? It's inviting children and young people to come in the first instance. It doesn't have to be about health. It could be about activities in the first place, afternoon teas, all of that stuff. So they always talk about wanting spaces, but it needs to be designed with them in mind.
Thank you. Thank you so much to all four of you and especially to Kaiser for the time you've made to share your expertise with us today and for all the work that you're doing more broadly. The secretariat will be in contact with you in relation to any questions on notice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.